Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Hammond City Council, regular session agenda, April 11th, 2023, 5:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Divatario.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Stand for our prayer. Let us pray. Most gracious, lovely, eternal Father, we thank you on today. Father God, we give you glory and honor that is due your name. Thank you, you Father, that this is the day that you have made. We shall rejoice and we shall be glad about it. Father God, we come this evening to handle your business in your name in this city for our constituents right now, that take care of their neighborhoods right now. Father God, continue to look down upon our city. Continue to bless and cover our police. Continue to bless and protect our fire department right now. Father God, continue to touch each person that's a part of this administration that works in our city. Father God, actually continue to cover our council right now, each member and their families right now, Father God. Continue to give them wisdom and knowledge from on high and to continue to move forward to serve this city. Father, there's every time we need you. We need you right now. But we just look right now, Father God, just thanking you for all that you have done for us right now. We come right now, Father God, showing compassion toward one another right now and forgiving those that have done anything against us, just as Jesus has forgiven us of our sins. So we just thank you for it right now, that everything this evening will be done decent, all the pleasing and in your sight. Therefore, you will get all glory, all honor, and all praise, because it all belongs to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
For our pledge of allegiance, all veterans and active military, please render the proper salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion of approval?
She'll move.
For our March 28th, 2023 meeting, please.
She'll move.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Approval of the minutes from our April 3rd, 2023 meeting, please.
Make a motion approved.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye. I got a message at the stream. It didn't work. And I don't know if they're doing that or not. The live stream is not working. Somebody texted in.
All right. Down to our presentation. Our first presentation will be from NACA representative, Mr. Washington. Riles, come up, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Washington Riles. I'm from North Carolina. Blessed to be here in your lovely city again today. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about NACA this afternoon. I've worked at NACA for over 12 years. I started at NACA when during the mortgage crisis, I started on the side where folks were actually losing their homes due to the mortgage crisis and predatory lending and some of the things that, you know, all the other things that caused folks to get into bad loans. When I had the opportunity to move up in the ranks, then now I'm on the purchasing side where I can offer folks the NACA mortgage, all right? The NACA mortgage is what you have there. There are four different options, four different products that we have, all based in the NACA mortgage. It's the foundation for each one, and I'll kind of cover those with you. The NACA mortgage covers four main barriers to homeownership for folks. Number one is predatory lending based on predatory, predatory underwriting based on credit score, all right? The NACA mortgage is not based on credit score. It's character-based lending. Everyone gets the same rate or starts at the same base rate, whether they have a 500 credit score or 800 credit score. If you go in a contract today, you're going to start with the same rate. Yesterday was 5.5% with the ability to buy the rate down. If you're a low to moderate income buyer, you get an automatic 1% reduction in the rate. Barrier number two is racism and biases. If you go out, anyone that's qualified with NACA goes out into the housing market searching for a home with a preapproval letter that carries just as much weight as any other lender. The need for significant savings, the NACA mortgage is no down payment, no closing costs, all fees, all the common fees that you see in a typical lending transaction are paid by our lender with our lending agreement, all right? It's not to say that a person goes into a NACA mortgage house poor, right? We are a housing counseling agency before we are a mortgage broker. So we're going to counsel the member from beginning until they're ready for homeownership to where we know that they're actually going to be successful as a homeowner and be able to sustain the mortgage, right? We don't want them to... What good is it to me to stand in front of you today and say that I have the best mortgage product in America and everyone that I put into a loan is going into foreclosure, right? So that is NACA. We are a housing counseling agency before we are a mortgage broker. And then I talked about the terms, right? So if we look at, if we look into what I've given you here, you can see that NACA talks about, you'll see some of the characteristics of the NACA mortgage on page two here. Well, the numbers don't see here. You'll see under NACA mortgage, you'll see some of the things that I talked to you about. We're not based on credit score, the interest rate. You have a 15-year term. You have a 20-year term. You have a 30-year term. Property types that are eligible are a single family, a duplex, a tri-family, or a quad, four-family home, all right? You have to actually, it's an owner occupancy program. The program is not for investors, all right? We're purely about stabilizing communities, right? Stabilizing neighborhoods. That's what we're for. And I encourage younger folks to take a look at the multifamily, right, to build some initial generational wealth into their home immediately, right, and some additional income. New construction's on the table, and we also have, for any home that needs a rehab, we'll finance up to 115% of the appraised value for any home that needs a rehab or they have some sort of a wish list items, maybe you want to fix up a bathroom or your kitchen or the house needs repairs, right? We also have, we also have a rehab refinance program for anyone that actually has, say, a land or air property, or they have a property that they need to do some rehabilitation on. The second mortgage program, second program you see there is called the HOT PHA. It's Home Ownership Through Public Housing Assistance. That's roughly on page three there. Home ownership through public housing assistance. This program is based on, again, the counseling of the NACA mortgage, right, to make sure a member is ready for homeownership, but it's designed to assist the person that's already receiving a housing choice voucher or they're currently on Section 8, right? So we take a look at using the payment standard that they may have. So say, for instance, it's $1,500 that they would get from any, whatever the housing authority is. Maybe it's a city housing authority or county housing authority. The payment standard would be maybe $1,500. We're back into a purchase price for the $1,500. But the member is paying, is going to continue to pay, they're say roughly 30% of that. And then we'll take that against their current debt, and that person is going to be qualified for a mortgage for 15 to 20 years with the objective of paying the house off at the end of that mortgage, right? So that's taking more people off of the Section 8 role, putting them more into the homeownership role, freeing up those vouchers for other folks in the city that could actually use them. Okay? The second, the third product that we're looking at here is called the dollar program. Now, this one, we could definitely use your help with, right? So any of your blighted properties, we ask that you would pass those costs, pass those properties, those sites, those lands, the properties on to the NACA member for roughly a dollar, right? And then we have the rehab refinance program to help the member get, do the structural work and get that property up to a living condition, right? Cold and bring everything up to where they want to live in the home, and it's back up to, you know, your tax assessed value. You can assess taxes on it. They're going to be, you know, viable in the community with a lovely home with equity, right, passed directly on to the NACA mortgage, through the NACA mortgage, all right? You look interested in that one. All right. All right. And take a look at some of the eligibility criteria, I think that'll be, that'll please you as well, is the period of continuous three years that they're living in the city or a person that has actually lived in the city and moved out for different reasons. We want to, we want to bring those, we want to bring those people back into your city with that program. All right. Then we also have our, we also have our affording, affordable housing development. That's on roughly page six or seven. And that program is where we actually look to work with different developers to develop land and to build, build properties similar to a new build, right? So we get the construction financing, and then they're going to come in with a NACA loan to purchase a home on the back end, all right? And then we're also looking at the, on the last program with the, where we actually work as a developer, we're looking at building, bringing in factory-built homes and placing them on different, on land to, to give a member roughly, basically, a brand-new home, all right? Basically, a brand-new home. So those are the things that we're implementing and we're spearheading, and we want, we want the help of the city and the grace of the city to do. My first time here in, my first time here in Hammond, we were, we were within NACA's nationwide, right? We have 48 offices across the nation. My first time here in Hammond was during Martin Luther King Jr. Weekend. We actually did what we call an Achieve the Dream event. And so we were down at the African American Museum here in Hammond while we were in 19 other cities with the objective to qualify as many members as we possibly could during that, during that weekend. And so we, you know, we just want to, you know, reinforce that we're, we're all about neighborhood stabilization and anything that we can do to enhance the community and change the mindset of folks that are constantly, that just believe they are renting or their homeownership is not attainable for them. We're, you know, we're all about the member, you know? We don't get, we don't get paid from the members. There's no cost to the member. All our services are free. They pay a $25 member dues. They pay a $16 credit report fee that's passed through to the member. Our, that's passed, that they get refunded back to them on their closing disclosure. NACA gets its money from our lender. The lender pays us. So and included in that origination fee, those fees that I was telling you about, if you go back to some of the initial characteristics of NACA, no down payment, no closing costs, all compensatory fees that are paid in a normal mortgage transaction, those are paid by the lender through our agreement with them. So I hope that I've given you some solid information and some good information, just a tidbit of what we doing, how we get it done. We definitely appreciate the time of you coming and being here, and I look forward to hearing, hearing from you further. If you can kind of look into some of your plans, and maybe we can work together sometime in the future.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Michelle.
Good evening. Michelle Treshwig and Chris Barrow with Christian LaGrace, auditors for the city of Hammond. I am very pleased to be here to give you all a quick presentation on the financial statements as of June 30th, 2022. They were submitted to legislative auditor December 21st. They have been reviewed and approved. They were due December 31st. They are available on the legislative auditor's website if anybody would like to go and find them. The type of report issued on the basic financial statements was an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, the best opinion you can get. The report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements in accordance with governmental auditing standards. We did have two findings. One finding is the same as prior year related to gapping Gatsby. Not a big deal. It does not affect the financial statements, does not affect any state funding, anything with the legislative auditor or federal funding. The second finding was related to the downtown development district. An employee did not follow the proper policies and procedures, which could lead to a potential fraud. This was brought to our attention and to the legislative auditor's attention prior to issuing the report. So we had to go ahead and put that and report that in our financial statements. We will be looking into this more in the 2023 audit, because there was an internal investigation ongoing at the time, so there was not a lot of information out there. Okay? There were no material weaknesses, and there was no noncompliance with any state laws or anything like that, which was material to the financial statements. We did have to perform the statewide agreed-upon procedures for 2022. They had been suspended for the last two years by legislative auditor, but we had to implement them again. We did have one finding there, and that was related to any, to the finance charges and fees relating to one of the credit card statements. They had been delayed in the mail, did not get, that has now been taken care of. Everything is done online. So that's been resolved. The single audit, which we performed in 2022, we did not have to do one in 2021. We have an unmodified opinion on the report, which is excellent, and there were no compliance findings or any issues or any findings at all with internal controls over compliance. Any questions before we move to the next slide? We put together, this slide is a year-to-year comparison on the government-wide statements. The government-wide statements are inclusive of all current and noncurrent liabilities, all current and noncurrent assets, which is including your capital assets and any of your pension liabilities. This is basically like a business. This is not like your governmental funds that you all base your budgets on. This is all, sorry, all-inclusive. Okay, so the net position for the city of Hammond, total assets was $123,832, up 16 million from prior years, 107.5. Total liabilities was 49.6, almost 49.7, which is down almost 9.4 million from last year's 59 million, which is great. Your total net position increased 12.3 million from about 57 to 69. Total revenues increased about 6.5 million from 46 million to about 52.6 million. Your expenses, total expenses, they only increased 1.1 million from 39.1 to about 40.2. So your change in net position, like I said earlier, was 12.3. That was an increase in net position of about 5.4 million, which is great for the city of Hammond. All right. So this next slide is your revenue comparison. Okay? So what we did is we took, this is also in your management's discussion and analysis, okay, in your audit report. So for your sales tax, and I'm going to talk about four of the key ones here. Your sales tax increased about 4.2 million from last year, which is great. The next one would be your capital grants and contributions, both for your governmental funds and for your water and sewer. You all received FEMA funds. You all received ARP funding. You used some of the ARP funding, and you also had that clean water revolving loan slash bonds. So those increased, those capital grants and contributions. The next one is the charges for services for the water and sewer. There was a decrease from prior year, and that was a result of several large businesses closing. They also had a major water leak in 2021, and there was a business that was transitioning at that time. So that, the water leak also increased the revenue. It increased the revenue for 2021 for those businesses, and so we did not see that in 2022. So that's why. Any, before we move on, any questions on this one?
That major water leak, you said?
Yes.
Where is that for the?
Where was that water leak again?
That's the vast majority of it. It was about $800,000 or $900,000 attributed to one hotel. It had been a water leak over many months. It's currently under negotiation.
So that was the majority of 860,000, I believe, of it, something like that. Okay, the next one is the revenue comparison. So we took those numbers and we did a bar graph for you, so that you all could see how they look, and you can see how the sales tax increased. Lot of the other ones remained very consistent, with the exception of the capital grants and contributions, which we just discussed, increased so much due to FEMA and the capital water revolving grants. Okay. The next one is the expense comparison. Now, these are the sections in your financials on your government-wide, your general government, economic development. These aren't specific to a fund. These are your government-wide, your total revenues and expenditures that I had spoke of earlier. So your general government expenditures came down while the public safety went up. Public safety went up. You had your pension increase and costs and stuff. A lot of the other ones kind of stayed the same. Public Works did come down. Culture and Recreation went up a little bit. Water and Sewer went up a little bit, too, but not significant. So overall, as I said earlier, your total expenses only increased 1.1 million. So that was pretty good. Relating to your general fund and sales tax fund, these are kind of some of the two main funds. Your general fund is your operating fund. The fund balance increased about 30,000, leaving an ending balance of about 4.2 million. And I brought this up last year. The GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, recommends that a general purpose government maintain an unrestricted fund balance of at least two months of regular expenditures in case something happens. For you guys, that would be about 4.8 million as of June 30th, 2022. So you guys are really close. You had about 4.2 million. The sales tax fund balance increased over 5 million, leaving an ending balance of 10.0, almost 10.6 million. The collections increased approximately 4.2, which is about 17% from prior year. And this slide shows the general funds balance, fund balance compared to what the GFOA recommends. And you can see that you all, which is on the right, the GFOA recommends a little bit more in the blue, and you all are just right there. You're getting close. The sales tax fund, oh, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. We put some additional funds into the emergency fund, and I know that that's restricted, but does that not factor into this consideration?
No, it's actually separated. It's what, the 1.2 million, 275 you have in case of emergencies and stuff like that.
I think it's a little bit more.
Yeah, we added like 2 million.
About 2 million. I think we ordered about 2 more million to it.
There's 2 million. Oh, for this year.
Okay.
This was as of June 30th, 2022.
Okay.
Okay, because I knew it only went from like 1,263 to 1,275 is what we had in the audit report. Yes, in 2023. And that'll be a footnote in the audit. That'll talk about that increase. And then this is just a slide of the increase in the general, in the sales tax fund over the last five years to show you guys how much jump. I mean, five years ago, it was about 21, and now you're hitting the 30 million mark. That was as, now again, as of June 30th, 2022. Very good. Any questions on that? If not, I have my little quick summary. Okay, so the audit of financial statements received an unmodified opinion. Net position increased 12.3 million. Your general fund balance did increase. It was only 30,000, but it still did increase. There was no deficit spending there. Your sales tax funds saw a nice increase of over $5 million. And if anybody hasn't, I would suggest that you read the MDNA, because that is a very good comparison of last year to this year with explanations of the variances in any of the changes and also the financial highlights that occurred during that year. Okay? Thank you guys very much for the opportunity to come and do the audit, and thank you, Mayor Lacy and your staff for getting us done. We were able to get this one out timely. Last year, we had to extend it because of the hurricane and stuff, and we were able to get it out and get it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Introduction of an ordinance, number one.
Introduction of an ordinance to adopt and establish a tax on all taxable property within the corporate limits of Hammond for the year 2023. Casey Degel. Public Works, 2 mills. General Alimony, 9.04 mills. Police and Fire, 10 mills, for a total of 21.04 mills.
Good afternoon. This is just the introduction of the yearly ordinance that the state requires us to do to establish the property tax mileage for the next year, which will be 2023. The 2.0 mill Public Works is a 10-year tax that was voted on. That'll be coming up again in 2025 for a vote again. The 9.4 general alimony, the 9.0 for him, excuse me, general alimony is established by the state constitution, and the 10, the 10-mill Police and Fire is a 10-year tax that's set to expire in 2030.
Anyone have any questions on this?
I would just point out that this is not a tax increase. This is just allowing us to use the current rates that have been voted on by voters, by our residents.
Anyone from the council have a question?
Sal Nicolosi, 3607 Highway 190, Hammond, Louisiana. I'm not too familiar with these mills and all this, but who'd you say it was voted on by Tracy?
Lacy.
It's voted on by the city of Hammond, the people who live in the city limits.
So it's already been approved?
Yes, sir. These were approved several years ago. Both of them, ones that involve elections, was the first one, dealing with Public Works, and then the Police and Fire one. Both of those have been already handled under elections. They were good for 10 years. Casey gave the expiration dates of '25 and '30.
Now, this is going to run through '23 to through '25?
The 2-mill Public Works goes until 2025, and then we'll have another election to renew it. And then the Police and Fire mileage goes until 2030. We just recently had an election for that one.
Police and Fire?
Yes, sir.
2030?
It will expire in 2030.
So roughly, in my mind, I don't really understand, but roughly, what does it cost like a taxpayer for this 21.4 mills total per year? Is that based on their property?
That's correct. These are property taxes. So it all depends on the property values, and it all depends on if you have homestead exemption. So there's lots of ways to figure that out. Probably the best way would be to call the Tangipoo Assessor's Office, and you can always get online what your taxes are that are owed.
So is that what the city does their, their appraisers or whatever, from what the parish?
That's correct. We get the tax roll from the Tangipoo Assessor's Office. Yes, sir.
Okay, I guess it clears me up. Is anybody, you know, other than that, thank you.
Number two.
I'll make a motion introduce.
Oh, yes.
Senator.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Public hearing is scheduled for April 25th, 2023.
Introduction number two.
An introduction of an ordinance to amend the budget for fiscal year 2022 through 2023. Laura Hammond.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
So this is the introduction ordinance for the budget amendment. It's based off the beginning balances from the audited. So we have several funds that we need to update those numbers on, because they were over the 5% variance. In addition, we're going to recognize $800,000 in sales tax. Our December sales came in really strong, so it'd be a good idea to recognize that now. We're going to ask for an increase in utility billing line items. Those bills are coming in much higher due to the hurricane assessment fees from, Hurricane IDA. They've increased their formula rates and one of the other ones. Yeah, then, yeah, then the work orders are doubled compared to last year for LED lights, the more repairs on streetlights. So that's for utilities. We're going to ask for 40,000 more for overtime. We have a few departments that have been doing more, because more city events, more parades, more things at the gym, et cetera. And then also, we're going to ask for 715,000 for Project 12307, which you received a letter from Chuck about. And this is the introduction. The public hearing is April 25th, 2023.
Anyone else have any questions on this introduction?
Yeah.
I'm not going to say it again. It already got me recorded, so. Introduction of the ordinance to amend the budget. What is the budget right now?
You mean the whole budget? Or do you mean, she went over the changes?
It says introduction of an ordinance to amend. So what are we amending? How much money or what?
That's what she just reviewed. So we're review, we're amending several pieces of the existing budget. And that's what, that's what, that's what Laura just presented, and that's what's on a summary sheet.
I'm a little bit hard to hear, and so I couldn't understand what she was saying. So I'm asking you to clear it up for me.
So there's four major pieces. The first is the beginning fund balances. The city has lots of different funds that go through the city. And when we establish the budget, those are estimates originally. Then when we cross over July 1st, they become actuals, and we know exactly how much money is in each one of those funds because we're making the estimate the last quarter of the year prior. That's why it's an estimate.
Okay.
So we have to estimate three months in advance.
Okay.
So then when we cross, we know the actuals. So what Laura's doing is she's asking to make that estimate. She's changing that number to what the actual was. And then almost all of those funds, we had more money come in than we expected, or we spent less money in that fund than we expected.
So what is the figure? That's, that's what I'm asking.
I think he's asking a total figure. His amendment is what, 800,000 or?
No, the total figure is much different than that. We don't give a total amount because it's not, it's not factored that way. The, that the beginning fund balances is basically saying you start here, and then you have all the revenue that comes in.
Oh, that what, $1 million, $2 million, $10 million?
It's like buckets of money. Each bucket, each bucket has a different amount of money to start with, okay?
Okay, well, you gotta classify what bucket you're talking about.
And that's in the budget, yes. And then what we're doing is we're amending the beginning balance of different buckets in the city.
All right, but you still haven't come up with a figure.
Because it's different for each bucket.
Right.
There's a, there's a chart.
How many, how many buckets do you have?
How many, 15, 17?
Can you put it up there or?
We don't have that. We, we were planning on going into all this detail for the public hearing at the next meeting, so we could, she has a copy right there that we could kind of go through, but this is just introduction. We're not voting on anything tonight.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But in my mind, I'm trying to figure it out just, I guess, you know, when you come down to figures, it's a different ballgame. Estimating and giving me our true figures is entirely different, and that's what I'm, I'm a little bit mixed up, okay?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm telling you that this is way more, it would be easier maybe if you saw what's online.
I beg your pardon?
And we can show you this summary. So this is the beginning fund balance. And the general fund is 3.5 million.
Why don't you just read?
Would you like me to print this out for you? I mean, like, I could go into the office and print it out?
I don't want you to break the meeting up because of that.
Well, we're already breaking up the meeting, so. Do you want me to go through these kind of things?
Well, what I like to know is just a roundabout figure.
There's not a roundabout, there's not a roundabout figure. That's not how it works.
Okay, I'm understanding what you're saying.
In this, we're adding in 800,000, and we're taking out 715.
So why are you, why are you taking out 715 capital?
Because it's going to the drainage project. There were people who wanted more stuff in that project. These two are both getting added into the budget. We're adding 355,000 dollars in utilities and streetlight repairs, and we're adding 40,000 in overtime to multiple departments.
Okay.
And so these fall into the general fund bucket.
So these are gonna be improvements for the, the whole city of Hammond, or is it just delegated to a certain area?
No, these go throughout the city, throughout the city.
Guaranteed?
Yes, sir. Wherever there's a street light out, we make the repair. That's what pays for it is out of this line item.
Well, where I live at, there's no streetlights that I'm aware of.
There's no streetlights on Alida or?
I don't live on Alida. I live on Highway 190 West. There's no streetlights there.
Okay, well, that's a state highway, 190 West, so.
Okay. So y'all gotta make a proposal to the state to get light, lights on there?
Yes.
Okay, would y'all mind making a proposal or not?
We'll, we'll look at that.
Well, we're looking at money here. It's my, it's my taxpayers' money that you are spending. Is that correct?
I understand. We can look at that area, and we can figure out whether we can do that in this year's budget or whether it needs to go into next year's budget.
Well, let me ask you just a couple of questions. Every time I approach the city for information, we're gonna look into it. I've been looking into this program for five years.
No, you haven't looked into it.
Not this program. I'm not looking at this, I'm talking about overall, five years I've been dealing with the city of Hammond.
I think most of us, as long as we live here, deal with the city of Hammond.
Yeah, we deal with it, but guess what? All we get is, I'm looking at it.
No, I think we've resolved many issues. You and I have worked together.
We've worked together on only one or two projects, minor, minor projects.
You say they've been minor.
Well, I consider it minor.
Okay.
If you and I, which you and I discussed, we know. So what I'm asking is, I wanna know where my tax dollars is being spent every time.
So all the roads that you drive on in Hammond, all the streetlights that you see in Hammond?
There's no streetlights. In the city of Hammond, they got them right in the, in the downtown district, yes. But I live on the outside, so I'm being, no, 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 excuse me, Lacy, I'm sorry. There's not no lights out there on 190, even though it's on, it's a main highway. The lighting in the subdivisions that I'm aware of, most of the people had to pay for their lights.
You mean the developer paid to install it?
No. The individual who, who had the house built, he had to pay for to turn his lights on. Like, I have two lights, I have two lights, no, not a light built. I'm talking about just the lights separately.
Like a security light?
Talking about lights is one thing, right?
Like a security light at it? Is that what you're referring to?
Right.
Yeah.
The security light is different than a street light. A street light, for the city to pay for a light, it has to go onto the street, onto the public right of way. We can't light up people's private houses.
I'm aware of that, but that's, I guess maybe you're not, can't communicate properly or whatever. Okay, I think you got the message across here. You know, I just wanted the information on it. Now that Mr. Andre gave it to me, I'm good. Thank you.
Can I get a motion?
Motion introduce.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
I don't know what I'm voting on. Uh-uh, same. I don't know what I'm voting on. I'm not gonna vote.
Public hearing is scheduled for April 25th, 2023 at 5:30.
Introduction number three.
Introduction of an ordinance to provide for the permitting of mobile food vendors. Councilman Andrews?
Okay, I don't know if we have a rehypalink, but each council member has received a copy of the ordinance that has been drafted up between me and the city attorney in reference to the mobile home vendors. Mobile home food vendors. Anybody, anybody had an opportunity to review it from the council?
Yeah, I had looked over it myself. My honest opinion, the food vendors, those are the ones that need to look at the rules and regulations that, that you all have on there. And for the people that I talked to, which, she wasn't pleased with the rules. And she have a food truck, be exact, tried to buy a piece of property in Hammond to sell out of a food truck. The building permit office told her, whatever you try to do, we're not gonna let you do it. And we talked today. And she not even my color. And I was surprised for them to try to shut her down, so she didn't even buy the property. And it's amazing that we talk about tax dollars and what are we trying to do for the community and for the neighbors for something like that to take place. And that's why I tell everybody, anytime you have a problem, on the record, you can go to the mayor if you want. You can go to the chief if you want. You can go to the permit office if you want. But if you want something solved, you come to the council meeting because that one or two people you talk to, they gonna tell you exactly what you wanna hear. And that word gonna stop. When you have a problem, you come to the council meeting, and you speak, and you tell what's going on, because guess what? You'll find out you're the only one that don't have that problem. And that's why I tell everybody, come to the council meeting, and you can speak on it. And tell, and so I found this out today, and I'm gonna tell you, she's in, in Oregon. That was she at, she's on vacation. And I told her, I apologized from bothering her and stuff, so she said that we can put this on hold. And I told her, this is something that I didn't do. You have to get with Councilman Kip to see, because she need to go, she wanna sit down and talk with you and go over the rules. So that's what I have to say on it.
I mean, I think, need to look into this a pretty good little bit right here. I know this is introducing it for a public hearing, but I think we just gotta be careful how we do the food trucks throughout city Hammond. I think we need to take some thought, time, looking at it, and really do some investigation of other cities who have them, their, their pros and cons, maybe a designated area, food truck court, something a little more detailed. At least an introductory to it, to where it kinda has a system in place to manage and monitor easier. So, you know, I mean, I think that's something that we really need to look at and get a, get a good game plan and maybe some meetings put together to, to really get a, a good handle on it, so.
I was under the impression at the last meeting that there's a request for, to get this moving, and so, I mean, I'm fine with that, but I thought last meeting, it was like, let's get this going. We're, we have people who are trying to make a living and everything, so, you know, the substance of the articles, I don't, I'd love to know if, what anyone, I mean, this has been floating around for a while. Andre sent this a long time ago, and then I know there's some slight changes to it, but I don't know if people wanna talk about it, and, and it was posted online. I saw someone shared it on social media, so there's probably some input. And if we need more public hearing or more public comment on it, that's what we're here right now for.
Yeah, let me make it very clear. I wanna thank Kip for bringing it up, and I appreciate him bringing it up. And if something should have been done 20 years ago, be honest. And it took somebody to sit in and say it's time for it. So the input, and I don't agree with you too much, Councilwoman Gonzalez, and I'm gonna be honest with you, because anytime I'm for something, you're always against it. But I'm gonna say this for the record, that I'm glad you said it. So whatever the president wanna do on this here, I'm all for it. And I kinda figured you'll be for it because you don't see the rules, or you don't understand the rules because y'all don't have a food truck yet. And if y'all had a food truck, I, I know, y'all might have one in the making, I don't know. So I'm just gonna put it out like that. But the people that got food trucks, they understand. And this what, this what the lady told me. She said the, the, the parish, they come out and inspect her truck all the time, but yet, when do downtown get inspected? The restaurants. And I'm gonna say this, for the record, because I'm seeing it now. Popeyes got a lot of sewer work going on right now in front of Popeyes. I've been hollering about sewer for four years. Four years I've been hollering about sewer. And I'm looking at the guys up there working in front of Popeyes. Popeyes was one of the creators, help, guy right here. He sat there and said Greece was in the line. Greece in the line, Zasby, Greece was in the line. All this here time, we've been crying about sewer. Nobody said nothing. And now that guy here, you know, we talked about the grease trap at Popeyes, you know? It was, it was too small. It was good for that time, but now, when the last time it was inspected? I told him, let's come up with some rules and regulations that these grease traps need to be checked. Andre sat there and said, at the time, they didn't have nothing in place. Then later on, he found something in place. Zasby, all these here places, it's amazing how those places affect my district. Nobody said nothing. And now, you know, with these food trucks, they can't put a bench out, can't put a, a chair out, you know? I'm gonna say it, lockerellas. Here you done built everything for lockerellas. Everything from a sidewalk to the road up for the sewer. I mean, huh, lockerellas got it made. But what about these moms and pops trucks? Work with them. I ain't hear y'all say, you go 1, 2, 3, the city do their third, lockerellas do their third, DDD do their third. Let me hear you say you gonna do the third for the food trucks. Help them out, you know? These people gonna bring revenue into Hammond. The same rules apply, and that's why I say, I know if you read the rules, you didn't understand the rules because the same rules apply to the restaurants need to apply to the food trucks. And I wasn't supposed to say nothing on this here, but God knows, it's, it gonna be hard for me to sit up here and open my mouth. Oh, $400, $100, no. If you don't want them, the ministration, say you don't want them. If you don't want them, Andre, say you don't want them. But don't sit here and put all these rules in place like you trying to help them, and you're not trying to help them. See, one thing about our community, we don't have that much commercial property. Thank God I do, but we don't have that much commercial property. They need to be able to put those trucks in this simple, 1,000 feet from a noodle restaurant. That's all they need to be, 1,000 feet from another restaurant. I built the club from the ground on up, knew every club they had in Hammond. Wasn't worried about no club. Did it, done it, been there. And I'm saying that to say this here, downtown so concerned, the folks can't even come downtown. Y'all was letting them come on hot August night. You, you cut that out. One night, one night, they can't do that no more. So stop stopping people from trying to conduct business in the city. Everywhere else in Tangipoe Parish have food trucks. Not Hammond, not Hammond. The permit office, you know, you can't do this, you can't do that. For the record, the mayor friend had a food truck downtown Hammond. Nobody from downtown said nothing about it. You ain't even hear nothing about his food truck, you know? And, and the permits, just like you say, you get a special permit? I heard you say that, Lacy, last Tuesday. I wants to see those special permits and see those rules. What rules did they have when we see these food trucks in Hammond? I wanna see those rules, not these rules that made up by the city attorney. He don't have no food truck. He don't want no food truck. I don't wanna see these rules that the city attorney made up. I wanna see the rules that you got or Pete Friend that had a food truck downtown Hammond. The steakhouse had a food truck. I ain't hear nobody say nothing. Taco and Beer had a food truck. I don't hear nobody say nothing. And them same food trucks I see, guess what? I see them in my district. They don't just stay downtown, they in my district. I don't hear nothing being said about that. So I wanna see them same rules that apply for what these trying to do now. Let me see them rules for those trucks. And I wanna see those permits, and I'm saying it on the record. So it shouldn't take no six weeks for me to see those same permits that they had these food trucks downtown Hammond. Those are rules that I wanna see.
And, and I, and I think, I think, who's gonna, who's gonna enforce all these rules? What department? Is, is there, y'all hiring somebody else to look at all these food trucks? And then secondly, I mean, it doesn't affect downtown because they're not allowing downtown on this, but my district isn't mostly downtown, so, you know, I, I think, you know, we need to look at it, maybe have a designated area, food truck court area, so where it can be an area where it's manageable. I'm not too sure where you'd put it at, but I think something like that would be an easier way to kinda conduct and manage and lease spots, rent spots, one area to where people Um, one area to where people know where to go to do all their shopping or eating and. And then the city can monitor and manage it a little better. Uh, but that's, that's just my opinion. Um. But, you know, I, I think, uh, it's a big decision to be made and it needs to be done right. And, uh. You know, yeah, I mean, it says none downtown Hammond, which others, other districts don't have it, so. Um, you know, I wanna make sure it's in order and set up right in my district. And, uh, and make sure it's, it's, it's good for the public, good for the people, and done the right way, so. Um, that's, that's where my concerns are, so.
Give us your name and address, please.
My name's Kelly West. Address is one sixteen Elm Drive, Hammond, Louisiana. Um, so. We did get a, you know, get a chance to go over these, and I say we. Um. Because I run under the rule of fire truck, I mean, the food trucks need to stick together. So we communicate. Just like we expect the restaurants to communicating about us and themselves. Um, so first of all, good evening, council. Um. If you guys will go to. Uh, page two.
Mm-hmm.
It was page two for me. Um. Uh, page two, section nine dash three hundred, permits and requirements, and we'll look at, uh, D. One issue that we have with, uh, particular that part, um.
Which one, in, uh?
Section D, the mayor for the city of Hammond may prescribe such other policies and procedures. As to the issuance of permits as may be required to carry out the full intent and the purpose of the ordinance. Our issue with that is. Um. If, let's just say, we were voting on this matter today and it moved ahead as it is. If I can ask the, the group to do this, if you got a food truck and you're in the room, y'all stand up, just so that they can see the movement that's in the room. Um. If we agreed to that. We feel like as a group, the mayor would have the right to come in and say, okay, well, we're gonna make this change. We can't permit you yet. And we'll keep kicking this can down the road and never get to where we wanna be. So. If it's, uh, maybe an understanding issue on our part, or if there needs to be different language that's put in. We would like to see that happen. That's, that's one of the top ones. Um, and I only ask them to stand up just so that you guys can see. That I'm not just speaking from myself and being the owner of the Fire King food truck. These people have trucks. Everybody in this room wants to be permitted, we're ready to go to work. So, um, next section, section nine dash three zero one, permit and franchise fees. There shall be a single instance permit fee for one hundred dollars. The annual permit fee shall be four hundred dollars. We don't agree. Again. Um. The single issue permit, I'm guessing that's gonna be the special permit or what it was called in the past. For a single day, that's a lot of money for a food truck. I'm just gonna be honest with you. Um, food trucks come out, we don't have a set dollar amount that we know we're gonna go out and make on any given day. We have to deal with weather, we're not brick and mortar. A lot of us can't sit out in a thunderstorm and run. So there's an issue there. My main issue, and this is, I'm gonna divide myself from the group, but I do know that they feel the same. Four hundred dollars for an annual? Ridiculous. And I say ridiculous because. We pay for the state license when we have to go for the health inspection and the whole nine. It's one fifty. Every other city in our parish is two hundred dollars. So why then are we paying Hammond four hundred dollars? Each neighboring parish is two hundred dollars. Livingston, Saint Tammany is two hundred dollars. So where we come up with this four hundred dollar fee? Not sure. But. If this is the way that we're gonna move forward, we just wanna go on the record as saying that, that we feel like that needs to change. Not, you know, necessarily being argumentative, but if you guys don't know, we don't feel like you can fix it. All right, moving on. Um. We, a lot of, uh, page three is kinda standard speech and stuff that we know. I know you guys had to put that in there, um, but. I mean, we, we're smarter than the average bear, we're not gonna put a food truck at a red light. Um. The main thing for me on page three is gonna be number eight. Um, and I'll read it, no mobile food vendor shall set up any chairs, stools, tables, and other fixtures. Furniture or other obstructions in connection with operation. All right, so. We deal with elderly, just like any other business. I don't feel like it's that big of a deal to have a chair, a bench, or something like that for somebody to sit on. But at the same time, and we'll get to this later on. Um, none of us wanna get fined for doing something to accommodate a customer. Customer service is the key to business, no matter what you're doing. Um, so. We feel like there needs to be some verbiage dealt with in that particular regard, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have a question about that. Um. I could see the city's goal of not wanting furniture put out when it's on city property. So say you park it in a, in a, um, parking lot or something. But if it's private property, perhaps that makes more sense that you could put things out, is that a reasonable type of?
That, uh, again, I'm gonna jump in for the group, I think on private property, that would be a reasonable thing. Um, I think even on public property, depending on where it is. It should be something that, because you guys go down in and we kinda deal with trash pickup and, you know, stuff not being left out twenty-four hours and that kinda thing. Allow us the opportunity to make the environment, but not leave it there. You get what I'm saying? If you're gonna, because you, you know that you're gonna have violations. You know that you're gonna have to have code enforcement, make that a part of the code enforcement. Um, that, I, that's just what I see. Um, let's see. All right, so next one down is gonna be number thirteen, no mobile food vendor shall operate any horn. Sound amplification system or other sound, uh, producing device or music system. Our objection with that is, and I'm just gonna, this is something that we pointed out as a group. What are you guys gonna do about the ice cream truck? I mean, we all know the song, you know, it, it's gonna come around, it's gonna happen. We're not saying that we're coming into town to throw a block party. But, I mean, you got Cinco de Mayo coming up. If I'm a food truck, I kinda want them to know, hey, this is a taco environment, it's a kinda festive environment. Um, you have the police department to enforce an ordinance as far as noise. Um, so if that is the issue, then we should go there, but just to say. Our other thing with that is, uh, I have one, I'm not sure how many of the other guys have it, but we have to call out orders. So if the customer's not right by the window, I'm gonna use the microphone, something like this, and say ticket number such and such. We're not trying to get a fine for that. So again, as a way to move forward, we're not saying that we're coming to shut the block down with a party. But certain atmospheres, I know on a Sunday. If I get out of church and I've got enough time to pull up in the top of the parish and run my trailer, we got gospel music going. Customers are used to that. Um, so, and that's not the case for everybody, but I think that it should be something that we could look at and kinda negotiate on. All right. Let's see, on page four. Um. Section nine dash three zero four, fine and forfeitures process, processes and procedures. Um. Section A, any violation of applicable provisions of this ordinance. May be ground for revocation of a permit or franchise issued under the ordinance. And shall be an infraction punishable by a fine not to exceed one thousand dollars per violation. So. We're not saying, don't give us a fine. Let, let me, let me start by saying that. But we feel like a thousand dollars is kind of excessive per violation. Um.
Excuse me, what, what number that was again?
That was, uh, section A, uh, section nine, three oh four, um, topic A. Page four, I'm sorry. So, um. You know, without knowing everything that you guys stipulate to a restaurant. We feel like that that is probably outside of that. Um. As a group, again, anyone else that wants to come up, that wasn't on our call. Um, we feel like five hundred dollars is fair. Uh, we feel like a thousand dollars is a bit excessive because. It depends on the code enforcer, you can come out and find three violations, it's three thousand dollars, that's the end of that food truck. I can almost guarantee you that. None of us in town are making that kinda money to be able to hold up against that. But we're not asking you guys to come out and just slap our hand. You know, we, a violation is a violation, it be, should be something that you feel, okay, well, I ain't gonna do that no more. But a thousand dollars is kind of excessive. Um, so I feel like there needs to be some negotiation where that is concerned. Um. Let's see. So. The other issue under this one, well, section nine dash three oh five. Um, in regards to the zoning on, uh, topic B, notwithstanding anything to the contrary. The provisioning of this ordinance does not allow operation of a mobile food vendor, um, of mobile food sales. In any zoning district in which food sales are not allowed. So. The big problem with that one is, we need to know zones. Uh, it's not, you know, we can't just guess. Um, a lot of this, um, and I, just to back up a little bit, a lot of this, we feel like downtown development district. Probably has more importantly, a problem with the food truck. Um. Why that is, we don't know. But I'm also gonna reckon and say we don't care. Uh, we just feel like there should be an opportunity. We live and die by social media. Uh, we read Tangy Eat, Tangy Eats, uh, Rants and Raves for the parish. The comments that we see are, they want something different. Everybody, you get tired of eating the same thing, I'm a barbecue truck and I can tell you I ain't ate barbecue in six months. Just because I don't wanna eat barbecue does not mean that I'm not going to Lockeretta. Does not mean I'm not gonna visit street side. Doesn't mean that I'm not gonna visit one of the other food trucks. Um. We're just asking again that you guys make it fair. I don't believe, um, as far as trying to create basically a corral for food trucks is the thing to do. Um. Because we service a community. We're locked out of the parks. But then we say, we send the kids over there, they don't have nothing to do. So we can't go in there and do hot dogs or any of the rest of that, because we're not allowed to be in those areas. Bring us into these communities that you guys are in charge of, it's, it's your district. Let us in, let us figure out how we can help you by helping ourselves at the same time. A lot of this becomes education. I know that if I'm dealing with Councilman Wales, and I'm over there at the park. And I say, hey man, we wanna put this on, I wanna give some food away, let's do this. He and I can figure out what the negatives are in the community. We can find the bad apples in the bunch and that kinda thing, and we can kinda put together some programs to work forward. But if y'all don't let us into these areas, whatever district it may be in, whether we live in your district or not, if you don't let us in, we can't help you. Restaurants aren't coming to help y'all. They gonna, they help y'all when y'all show up at their door, that's when they help y'all. Um. Anytime that I've been called on, and I'm not gonna speak for the group, but anytime that I've been called on, we help out. I know for, uh, heavy, stand up. I know for a fact this man fed people during the hurricane. So. It's not that we're not giving back, it's not that we're not doing what we can. We're probably more of a help to y'all than y'all actually realize. Um, we just wanna make sure that going forward, it's fair. A thousand feet? Um, I'm not gonna say that we necessarily agree with that either. Because that puts us in some areas that's gonna push it kinda tight, you get what I'm saying? If we're McDonald's and Burger King, you get what I'm saying, they don't have those same kinda. Just give us the opportunity, call us in the room. We're not opposed with this thing going forward, we need this to happen. So we're not at all about saying, kick it down the road, let's take it another month, all of the rest of that, we're ready to go now. But we wanna be in the room or at least have some part in the conversation when this stuff comes out. We don't wanna feel forced to have to say, oh yeah, we gonna take this. And we're not really, nobody really agrees with it. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to thank you for taking the opportunity to explain some things here.
Right.
Uh, in part of putting some of this out, I just thought of some things today that we could've included.
Right.
In it, and that's what the public hearing is for.
Right.
That's what we have, that's an open dialogue back and forth. You made some great points, some other things to consider to look at, that where we can fine tune this. I'm not in the agreement of kicking it down the road either.
Okay.
Uh, let's go ahead and, and put this dog to bed.
Right.
Uh, so that gives us some things to look at, where we can get together and rewrite some of this stuff.
Right.
To make another, to come back with inside of the, with the public hearing.
All right.
Uh, we could find something to common ground that we can agree on together.
The only other thing that I wanna say, and I know this was voiced by the group, by the time we knew about this coming out. Um, it kinda pushed everybody, because as a group, we all work, you get what I'm saying? So. If there's gonna be, if this is revised, we would ask the council to put it forward so that we got enough time and not the day before. Um, it just kinda presses everybody, we don't really get a chance to really dive in. There were a couple people that were out of town and had to come back in, cancel vacations to be here. That just shows you guys how important it is for this for us. You know what I'm saying? If your family was planning on being in Florida for spring break because the kids are out. And then now you gotta come back for this because we got this information, you know, within the tenth hour. It just pushes everything, but we are here. Um, like I say, these are just some things that we just don't feel are fair. We can operate, we don't like the two hundred dollar portion of the permit for any city in the parish. But it's been a thing and it's been where we can operate, so. Those are just things that stand out, so thank you for your time.
Um, as to the posting it, so say this gets introduced, you know, this is posted, so usually this is what we work with for going to the next meeting. And then we have plenty of times where we change what was posted in the second meeting when we actually vote on it by amending it at that time. So I would submit that if we're gonna introduce this today, and we'll get to that at some point, that it stay as it is. And it's kind of like a working list of what.
Needs to be changed.
Your, a lot of your, um, suggestions seem very reasonable, so, you know, anything in addition that needs to be changed, the things you said you were thinking about. Those would be discussed again at the public meeting at the next one, um, if you set it for the next meeting, or even further out, if, if you guys feel that you need more time to discuss it.
One thing that I wanted to add that I just thought about as well was. You guys, council, thinking about what areas that you would like to see this operating inside of your district.
All at the mall, go all to the mall.
Yeah, so that, you know, that would be one thing that I'm asking you guys to look at and consider in your areas as well, that was something that I. Honestly forgot.
I'm sorry, one more thing that I kinda wanna point out, and just to make it known. Um. Nobody in the room is running a food trailer that's not getting past the state inspection. We all just had that come up, I just did mine last Tuesday. So keep in mind, guys, that it's not gonna be something that embarrasses Hammond. Um, that's not what we're trying to do. Um, all of the food trucks that I know that are in this room or above board, these are. Man, some, probably some of the high, most high dollar trucks around, so. Keep that in mind too, as far as when you guys are thinking about where you want them posted in the district. Um, but also think about how these trucks can work to your advantage. Um, in the sense of, um. I know you guys have had the Easter egg hunt, you know, those types of things. I can tell you from community group, we would've loved to be a part of that as far as being able to have an opportunity to give back. So. Keep those things in mind, it's just ways to move forward, but, you know, and bring us to the table if you got questions, that's all.
Again, I thank you.
You got it.
For shedding light, uh, and this is what it's all about. Be able to have a dialogue back and forth with one another, to clear up some things, and we can see some things. I don't have a truck, but I understand the mechanics and in and out of certain things with a truck.
Right.
And that, that, that works, so that's, give us some, some stuff to go back to look at, to fine tune. That way we can put this thing together so you guys can start operating and doing the things that you need to do.
You got it. Thank y'all.
Real quick, um.
Sir.
I was, today, this is, we can still have public comment on this, but today at the Kiwanis meeting, we had a presentation by Special Olympics. I shared this with some people who are already here. They are, the Special Olympics is looking for food trucks, they're actively wanting some, so I took some cards to share. Um, the weekend of May twentieth at Southeastern for their summer. So, I took some cards to share, um, the weekend of May 20th at Southeastern for their summer games. So, reach out to that person if you're interested in, in being a, a food truck vendor.
All right, got that. Um, and I'm going to post it to the Food Alliance group that we're in. Um, and I'm pretty sure you'll have plenty of responses from trucks. So, probably so much that you're going to have to tell some people.
Well, that's up to them. It's not, not for me, this is just up to them, I'm sharing the message.
Anybody else got anything?
Again, thank you.
I guess I'll need to stay up here all the time, not really. No, I'm concerned with, uh, for the city mainly, uh, you know, like allowing how many, I mean, sometimes this, people have food trucks, how many is going to be maybe, you know, within a radius of, uh, say, five miles, east or west, whatever? You know, the city has got to have some kind of boundaries or whatever for, because if you got fifty food, you know, food trucks out there, where they going to be parking these forty, fifty food trucks, you know? I mean, that's what I'm concerned with. Uh, I don't know, I, I don't think downtown Hammond's going, you know, where they going to park in downtown Hammond? You don't have anywhere to park downtown Hammond.
I think it leaves downtown Hammond out of this ordinance, I think it says no food trucks downtown Hammond, so that's what they say. So, you know, they don't have a problem with it, because they're not allowed downtown Hammond. But District Four isn't downtown Hammond, so we might have a hundred or more, whatever, scattered across District Four. So, there's some, definitely some policies and issues and details that need to be implemented, and taking your time, looking at it, to address your concerns, for sure.
Well, you know, and that's what was my concern really, when I say the city of Hammond. For some reason, I, I never see the boundaries, you know, downtown district is downtown district. But I'm paying sales tax, just like anybody, and I live four miles, three miles out of the city, without what I consider the city limits, but I am in the city limits. So, I still got to pay the taxes, and then I got to buy about the rules and the regulations of the city. But yet, you know, using, for instance, like you said, you might have fifty, a hundred people come in with, with, uh, you know, with these food trucks. So, who's going to stop the limit of, of these trucks coming in and putting them wherever, wherever they're able to park? You can't park it on private property.
You can.
Well, you could, if somebody allows you to park it. But how many people going to say, yes, put your food truck on my property? For nothing. Not too many, I don't believe, not in America, right now. Okay? But, but protecting the city of Hammond is my concern. And I feel, you know, I think the, the city council should kind of come up with something, and maybe present it to the mayor, and see what, you know, what's going to be the best agenda for these people. I'm in favor of food trucks, because I have friends that own them. But they outside of the city limits, they, they go out and they meet, they go at Punchetula, they go to Covetown, or whatever, using, using just names. But I don't want, if these people spend fifty, a hundred thousand dollars on a piece of equipment, I don't think they want another guy coming in here with a piece of equipment worth ten thousand or twenty thousand dollars next to them, you know? It's just like the same thing with housing, you know, basically. So, I mean, the city's got to have some kind of plan to regulate these food trucks. You know, I don't want to see a hundred fifty, two hundred food trucks coming in town. I mean, that's just not my, that's my opinion, you know? But, if, if you have a, I guess, uh, you know, people are responsible to a point, and which I'm aware of. And, uh, you know, we, we need to figure out some kind of plan or something to help these people, but yet, have some kind of regulations to make sure they don't become, you know, spent a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand for, for a, a food truck, and then you got a, you know, you got forty, fifty. Nobody's going to make any money then. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
I just want to respond, again, Kelly West, one sixteen, now I'm driving Hammond. Um, the group, we're not afraid of competition. Bring whatever food truck you want, we're from Hammond, we represent Hammond, we want all the smoke, that's all I'm saying.
All right, again, I'm, uh, asking each council member to assess the areas in their district where they would be fine with the trucks operating in, and if something we could add into this as well. Yes, sir, you name an address, please?
How you doing? My name is Henry, Henry Hop, uh, I own, I don't want to write the black box, a food truck. And, uh, I'm, you know, I be everywhere, I'm, I stay in, uh, Denver Springs. But, you know, I operate all around this city, but, um, you know, on the outside. But, um, I, I just wanted to speak, you know, when y'all, um, when y'all do y'all mapping, you know, all I ask is that, you know, you don't cluster us, you know, sit us in one parking lot or whatever, you know, like, you know, that would be the equivalent of asking Burger King, McDonald's, Wendy's, and all of them to be in this one parking lot and nowhere else in the city. You know, that's, you know, like, the city's big, you know, and as far as, you know, as far as he says, you know, uh, like, no city, you know, even, even New Orleans, like, you go to New Orleans, you go to the hospital or something, you know, they might have four or five food trucks, and everybody with a food truck know that the hospital is the spot. You know, so, you know, as far as, you know, you having to worry about fifty or sixty food trucks in Hammond, you know, I, I doubt that, you know, that'll, that'll be a problem. But, um, you know, and we all respect each other, you know, as far as, you know, confrontation and nothing like that, you know, like he says, you know, we, we learn from each other. When we side by side, you know, we, we paying attention, you know, because that's business, that's growth. You know, and, uh, that, that's all I wanted to add, just, you know, hoping that y'all don't cluster us together, you know, into a parking lot. I mean, limit us to one parking lot or whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm kind of confused. I guess when I read this, I thought, um, the majority would, would be on private property, saying, you know, you can come to the funeral home parking lot, or, you know, gnarly barley, or wherever. A person's got some land out in District One, and they want to allow food trucks on it. Because you can't do it on the street, right?
Right.
Okay, you can't do it in the park, unless it's a special event. So, where else, where else am I looking to someone can put a food truck, other than someone's private property that they're letting? Am I missing something, Andre?
It's written, so the city designates areas where food trucks would be allowed.
But how could, if it's private property, that's already in there. So, where else can the city designate? Like, you can't put it in front of my house unless I say it's okay.
Well, it's still got to be in an area designated for mobile home, mobile food vendors, food trucks.
So, but here's what I'm not, I guess what I'm not understanding. If the city said everywhere it can go, that food is allowed.
Yes.
If that was a blanket, everywhere food can go that's allowed, that's going to be private property, whether commercial or residential, wherever it's allowed.
To be on private property, it's got to have permission of a landowner.
And there's no other places they could go. Am I wrong in understanding that? Because it's not city-owned property.
Well, it's, it's tiered. I mean, it's got to be in an area where you've got a permit. And it's got to be an area where the city says, these are allowed. We know the DDD, in this, the way the ordinance is drafted, is excluded.
Right.
But beyond that, the city, and it's not in this ordinance, where they're, where they're specifically designated. But it's got to be in an area designated by the city for, for food trucks. And then, if it's in that area, it could be on private property, but it's got to be with the permission of a landowner.
But why wouldn't the city say food trucks can go anywhere other than the DDD? Because you have to get the property owner's permission anyway.
You could.
So, why am I picking out spots in District Two?
You, you could, I mean, councilwoman, it's, it's however you guys want it.
How do other cities do it?
I don't know.
That's, that's my whole problem right here, is that this is rushed, sloppy, put together. And you have to take your time and do some research, and look at other cities and other areas. This has a ton of people, we have twenty thousand, they have three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, whatever. So, every city's going to be different on the regulations, different sizes, different layout, different planning goes involved in that. Um, some are trying to get rid of food trucks, some may like them, some may have had them scattered all over the place, and they decided to change it to where they put a food court, because they had issues with maintaining and managing and policing and governing, code enforcement, and all the trucks scattered all over the place. So, there's pros and cons to everything, and there's some areas have made changes and improvements, and some haven't. And, and some are doing away with, some are adding them. So, it just depends on a lot of issues, and you have to look at Hammond and how it is, and, and what's the best fit, what the area is, and, and, um, you know, and so there's a lot of planning goes in place, if not. I mean, I got litter all over my district that don't get picked up, don't get enforced, probably hadn't had a ticket, litter ticket probably. I'd love to know how many we have issued in the city of Hammond in the last six months. So, I mean, those are things that are issues that I have. I got, I got, uh, buggies, uh, from different, uh, retail stores laid out all over my district. They don't get picked up, they don't get cleaned up. So, I'm just trying to understand who's going to manage and enforcing these codes that I can't get the ones on the books in my district enforced and, and cleaned up. So, that's the problem I have. So, we're just adding more things to it, and I want to know what department's going to manage all these food trucks.
Yes, uh, to me, I'm, I'm in the same predicament. I'm thinking, you know, we have issues already, but what I'd like to know from the people who have the food trucks here, for instance, this gentleman here, uh, where do you park your food trucks at the moment? Where, where are you placing them?
So, right now at the moment, none of us operating in Hammond, inside the city limits. Uh, because we've all been told no in getting the state. From the time that we do state licensing, occupational license or permit is supposed to be administered by the city of Hammond. That's what the state says, that's the, the paperwork that we get. When you go to the permit office, you're not given that, because we're told that we can't exist inside of Hammond. Um, just real quick, uh, Councilwoman Gonzalez, the, and for Mr. Andre. Moving forward, as far as your question is concerned, our big thing would be the parks. That's a public space, right? So, right now, we can't go in them either. Um, if I wanted to pull up using, um, Albertson's parking lot, Windexy, or so to speak, that's private, somebody's leasing that space. So, if I get permission from them, how then are we, are you guys, or someone, able to come and force us out? That's what's happening at the moment. Even if, even if you're outside the city limits, somebody's forcing you off of private property that you're paying the person to lease the space. That cannot happen. You get what I'm saying? Because it's, you, you
Let me ask you, let me ask you something. Where, where, where do you have your truck right now opened up? Where do you serve food at? Where are you operating at?
Right now, I'm operating in the toll booth, because I'm not in
Okay, so you are operating and serving food in the toll booth?
Right.
On the highway, on the shoulder, or in a property, or?
Yeah, I'm on private property, which is, uh, I work for Cook, um, Portable Sheds. So, it's private property that they own, that I'm able to have access to. If I'm not there, then I got to go all the way, you know, Amy Kentwood, where I'm also paying a permit fee, which they don't have the rules that Hammond has. You understand what I'm saying? So, I can pull up in the Windexy parking lot in Amy, as long as I've got permission to put my trailer in there. Um, to me, that's the way moving forward. You get what I'm saying? If, if I come to your area, and I'm within, let's say, a block from your house, or a property that you own, and you say, hey, yeah, you can put your food truck out here from eleven to three, and that's our agreement, regardless of what the fees are, that's our agreement. We shouldn't be ran off, because somebody came along and said, okay, well, you know, her district's inside the city limits, or however that may play out. You get what I'm saying? So, we have to be able to agree somewhere that zone-wise, we know what we're doing. Because otherwise, it just seems like we're being shut out at the stake of the restaurants. Like, just basically the railroad. Um, there's a joke in our community, that if it come, if it's down to that, if it's down to just the restaurants in the downtown district, in school, we would have said, come outside, we're going to call the restaurants out, let's cook it off. So, that they understand, we're the same thing, we're in the same business, we're the same. We don't care about healthy competition. Bring whatever truck you want, we do this in our own community. There are, how many of y'all are barbecue trucks? So, I'm a barbecue truck, but I have no opposition to another barbecue truck being right outside my back door in my trailer. Because if he worth his salt, he got to come with it. His ribs got to be on point, his brisket got to show me something, he got to make me stop working. That's the way that we operate, we just want the opportunity. Uh, Councilman Sam, I understand what you're saying about litter and the, the control, and, you know, somebody enforcing the, the rules. I don't know what the position would require, as far as the code enforcement for food trucks. Let's lay it out, let's find it out. But we can't be compared to a New Orleans, a Baton Rouge, or anything like that, because the scene is going to be totally different. There are a whole lot more festivals that exist in those places that we don't have here. Um, take Punchetula, for instance, that's, that's our neighbor. Punchetula, you pay a permit fee of two hundred dollars, but when the strawberry festival comes, that two hundred dollars in Nolan Voie, you're going to pay another two thousand dollars for the festival permit. So, imagine that, then you got to rent the space, because you can't exist as a for-profit food truck on the grounds. So, start taking all of those things into account, which is why we don't, typically, most of us won't be down there. Just, let's just put it on, nobody has twenty-three hundred dollars that we just sitting on to pay for a one, a weekend permit. That's the way moving forward.
Does Punchetula have anywhere that you have permission to be on property, you can go? Or is it a zoning type of thing? I think the zoning thing is confusing.
Yeah, so, the zoning thing for here is confusing for us, because in Punchetula, I've been there quite a few times, and not had an issue as far as where I'm permitted to go, as long as my two hundred dollars is paid. Like, I don't know who they have in the position, but I know that if you show up with a food truck in Punchetula, and you call and say, hey, I saw X Y Z food truck, the next day, you're going to get a phone call saying, okay, well, we noticed you in Punchetula, but we don't have you on the docket with a permit. We need you to come in and come see us. I don't know how they do it, I don't know if you guys are in communication with each other, being that that's your neighbor, but moving forward, that is something that should happen. We don't have a problem with it. But to say, we're going to zone it strictly out to commercial, or however you're going to do it, is really, really confusing. Because if it's going to be private property, and most of the stipulations that you have fall off on private property, that's where we exist, as of right now. Oh, we're, we're not telling y'all that we want to go right there and pull up in front of the street side, that's not what we're saying. But we don't want to be told, you cannot go to Martin Luther King, you can't go to Z Murray, you can't go here, you can't, come on.
Kelly, are you selling in residential areas?
No, no. So, residential, it's always been our understanding from the state side, that you can't. So, which is another reason that you guys have the commissary law. If it was, if we could sell in a residential area, we could cook in a residential area. You, you get what I'm saying? So, all of us have a commissary that we have to deal with, because of the grease trap, and all of the rest that, you know, the state requires us to have. So, as far as the concerns about, you know, debris and all of the rest of that, it's really, I'm not going to say that it won't happen, or that it doesn't happen, but what I'm going to say is, it's extremely difficult, because you can get popped for an inspection at any time, on the state side, which is way more, going to be severe than any city can put on. So, and we're dealing with commissaries, food's got to be done this and that and the third. I, just let us know, guys, it, zoning-wise, it's a nightmare. Y'all got codes and, you know, it, it, it's everywhere. So, that's kind of where we are right now. But if it's open and we're just debating on public spaces, tell us which parks you don't want us in. Make it easy. You know, if it's a security issue, like I know you guys covered that last meeting, some of them don't have security cameras, some of them do. If that's the case, and that's the ones you don't want people congregating in because we're there, let us know that too. You know, but, and make it plain enough for us to be able to understand without the guesswork.
Got you. Thank you again. Thank y'all. All right, again, I, I'll make this notation. It was good to get this information, this feedback, to be able to move forward collectively, working together, to get you guys' concerns, where we can understand. Again, like I said, I, I don't have a food truck, but now I understand some of the ins and outs of the mechanics of different things with a food truck. So, uh, this was some good information, this to help us in order to continue to move forward, so you guys can, like I stated earlier, can get to moving and doing what you need to do. Anyone else from the public have any questions or concern on this matter? Anyone else from the council have any questions or concerns on this matter?
Sandra, one seven zero four four, East Park Avenue, Hammond. My question is, what is the reason why in the past, the food trucks are, are, are present, have not been allowed in parks? Is there a particular reason why? That they were not allowed in the parks? It's just, it's just always been that law on the book? It's just always been that law on the books like that?
There was just no permit for it. There was no inspection process, nothing set up, no permit was ever in the book of ordinances for food trucks.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, can I get a motion to introduce? Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution number one, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Lisa, you got this, April the 25th?
Oh, I'm sorry. Public hearing is scheduled for April 25th, 2023, at 5:30.
Resolution number one.
A resolution authorizing tacos and beer to sell and serve alcohol for a Cinco de Mayo celebration on Friday, May 5th, 2023, from 3:00 to 10:00, 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM, in the Morrison Alley Park, behind the restaurant and between Cypress and Cherry Street, Jose Valencia.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
My name is Brandon Robinson, I'm here on Jose Valencia's behalf. He's out on vacation, but I am the manager here at Tacos and Beer Hammond. We would like to do a celebration for Cinco de Mayo. We would like to close the alley park of behind, behind Tacos and Beer, but we will have a small stage set up. We will have our servers and our restaurant guests be able to go out there and fellowship and hang out and listen to live music, eat, and have a good opportunity for Cinco de Mayo.
Anyone from the public have any questions on this? Anyone from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number two.
A resolution authorizing tacos and beer to obtain a waiver of the open container law for a Cinco de Mayo celebration on Friday, May 5th, 2023, from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM in the Morrison Alley Park, behind the restaurant and between Cypress and Cherry Street.
We understand that liquor will be sold for Cinco de Mayo, but we do, we will make sure that our customers have cups, some will have koozies, and we will have designated spots for those customers to put their trash in and make sure they'll be responsible while they are being there for Cinco de Mayo.
You guys will card and make sure?
We will have all our servers and bartenders have their liquor license, and we will definitely make sure that we card everyone that's trying to purchase. We do not want underage drinking, and it doesn't matter if you look a certain age, we will card everyone.
Y'all gonna pick up the trash, you know, for the trash that the people drop, it gonna be picked up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the city workers don't have to pick it up then, right?
City workers will not have to come through the alley parkway to pick up any trash or any litter that's left behind, the restaurant is responsible for that.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, anyone else from the public? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution number three.
A resolution authorizing La Careta, located at 108 Northwest Railroad Avenue, to obtain a waiver of the open container law for Cinco de Mayo celebration on Friday, May 5th, from 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM in the closed area of West Charles Street, in front of the restaurant and in the south side of Casa de Fresca parking lot, Mary Royer.
Good afternoon, council, Mary Royer, 108 North Cage Street. I'm here on behalf of La Careta Restaurant. We are asking for a resolution for our restaurant to obtain a waiver of the open container for our Cinco de Mayo celebration that we will be hosting on Friday, May 5th, from 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM. We will be closing the street in front of the restaurant, West Charles, and placing a stage in the Casa de Fresca parking lot across from the restaurant, and closing off that area between Northwest Railroad and the tracks to place tables and an additional booth for alcohol purchases.
You know what? Well, you guys have a, you're gonna be selling in that spot, don't you need a?
Yes, we will be getting a special events permit from the ATC.
Do you don't need, like we did for them, to sell and serve alcohol? Because it doesn't say that here. This just says open container.
I dropped off some permits to the city as well.
Looks like.
Are you actually selling inside the restaurant, or selling on your property? Or are you selling in the street?
In the closed area, we do a booth as well.
So if the booth is on your property, you would need something special.
It's on our property.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, yes. So you're not setting up a booth in the street that you close off?
No, 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 it's on our property. It's just an additional one, as opposed to the bar that we have on our restaurant.
As long as it's on your property, you don't need authorization for that.
That's where they've done it in the past, is right there on the edge, in the courtyard area.
Okay, just wanted to be clear.
I'm sorry, it's okay.
Are you getting, and this goes for Jose as well, police detail?
Yes, I talked to Chief Bergeron today, and we have two officers that are gonna be present from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM during the Cinco de Mayo party.
So same question, you guys will be carding people for your booth?
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
Sal Nicolosi, 3607 Highway 190 West, Hammond, Louisiana. I'm looking at the, it said the closed area in Casa de Fresca Park, and so y'all have access to the city park? Is that city park in Casa de Fresca?
It is, we close off the front part of that lot, because we set up a stage and we use it to safely load and unload.
We use it to safely load and unload for our band.
Okay, and then you were saying something about you have two policemen that's gonna be patrolling there, or are they gonna be on the premises from the time that you start to the time you end?
We have two police officers who will be on the premises from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
And who's paying for these policemen to be there?
The restaurant is paying for the policemen to be there.
Okay, thank you kindly.
Pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number four.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to renew insurance coverage for the city of Hammond for the period of May 1st, 2023, to April 30th, 2024. Dan Style?
Yes, I'm Don Steele, Steele Insurance, 118 Southwest Railroad Avenue in Hammond. You should have your copy of the proposal in front of you. The coverages haven't been altered, I won't go through each and every one of them, but the aggregate limit is $3 million on general liability, with a million each occurrence, the automobile, $1 million, and with a $150,000, $150,000 SIR. The fire trucks do not have an SIR. Public officials errors and omissions, $3 million coverage with a million limit each wrongful act. Employment practices liability, $3 million with a limit of $1 million on each offense. Employee benefits liability, $3 million with $1 million each offense. Law enforcement liability, $3 million with a $1 million wrongful act limit. Automobile for the fire trucks is $1 million, there is no SIR on that. Excess workers compensation, $1 million with an aggregate of $1 million, $750,000 SIR. The airport liability, $10 million, $5,000 deductible, non-owned aircraft, $5 million, hangar liability, $5 million. You have a blanket bond for faithful performance for $100,000. You have revenue supervisor bond for $100,000. Workers' compensation bond for the SIR program that's required by the state. You have commercial property of $39,141,700 in value. That also includes a total limit of equipment of $1,431,086. Then you have, that includes your property as separate, it's not part of the package. So your annual premium on your property renewal is $280,744. So if you turn to the back, you can see what the difference is from last year to this year on it. Total premium this year for all lines of coverage is $1,085,325.39. We're very fortunate that we were able to talk United Fire Group into renewing our property insurance. The property insurance market in the state of Louisiana is in complete turmoil right now. We had a good conversation with them. We did go out on market, and no one was gonna insure $39 million property. We'll be lucky to get $10 million out of citizens at a couple hundred thousand dollars or more. So that's a real good thing for the city of Hammond. And I'll entertain a question.
I was just having a few, I think what it went up about $170,000, roughly, I think, from last year?
Yeah, it was up 20%.
Okay, and I was asking, since the last few years, about how many, you know, how much total has it been each year, roughly?
You have to take the rating basis?
Yeah.
And it, we can discuss that, I can bring that out for you. It is up over 61%. Most of that happening between the years of 2020 and current. The driving force behind that were loss ratios. In 2019 and '20, we had 156% loss ratio, and '20 to '21, we had 271% loss ratio. The '21, '22 or to current has not been fully developed yet. What is the rating basis for general liability, public officials' liability, the package itself, other than automobile, is your budget? Your budget from 2018 was $40 million, your budget now is $52.6 million. Expenditures are $40.2 million. That drives, that's what the rating basis is. That, together with other factors, loss ratios.
So what about the claims? Have they, what are the total claims this year, last year, and have they gone up from last year to the year before, since 2019 to now? Like, what, you know, are we running around the same? What's some of the numbers? 10, 20?
You have, you've had 275 claims.
275?
2018.
Since 2018, okay.
Your employee base has gone from 282 people to currently 348 people. That is part of the rating basis, again. Your payroll has gone from $14.4 million to $15.4 million. So all of these factors are interrelated, and to get specific, for example, the fire trucks, from '18 to '23, we've had nine claims, $346,000. It's really not out of control.
Police Department and Street Department?
Well, I don't really, you know, I could tell you where it's been driven from, but, you know, the police department has a lot of play in that with the automobiles, public works and workers' compensation. It just really depends, and we don't really keep up with it on a basis that y'all would informally. But to give you a little more detail, 2019 to present, you've had 39 claims of $1.6 million on the package. You've had general liability claims, you've only had six between 2019 and present, $127,000. EPLI claims, employment practices liability claims, you only had three, but there was LNE claims, you only had one, $82,000. Property claims, there were, I think, around $540,000 this past year. Workers' comp, we'd be here all day with those.
They're a lot.
They really haven't been unusual. '23 was actually a pretty good year. We only have 11 open claims, $133,000. One closed, we did have one that occurred, it was 391.
So is this an increase, staying the same from previous years, or?
I think that in my review, 2020 to current, maybe '21 to current, we've had the bad automobile claims that have driven it together, and it's not just claims, it's also budget, number of employees, everything that is, goes into rating the package or insurance. Property insurance, we're just very lucky that we're not paying a heck of a lot more.
Yeah, property insurance is kinda statewide, and, you know, it's a very, it's an issue for the property.
All of these issues are nationwide, so.
Yeah.
We just happen to be at the bottom. So, our state, unfortunately. We've had an exodus of insurance companies, we've had a lot of insurance company failures, and most recently, in the last two weeks, Allstate Insurance Company is gonna remove themselves from the commercial insurance market in the state of Louisiana.
Yeah.
And that's a company that's in all states, and they're removing themselves from five, Louisiana being one, California, you know, some of the troubled areas of the country. We have a litigious nature in this state, so.
Yeah, the property is kinda one of those things that kinda, it is what it is. Some of the other departments, you know, I just wanted to see if it was on an incline increase, if there's something that was maybe self-inflicted that we could possibly, you know, work a little on, on maybe, you know, training or education or whatnot, depending on what areas are they coming in, you know, mostly. If there's a department or area that's having a higher claim ratio than others, you know, is it something we need to look at?
Safety, safety as far as that goes, and we do have claims meetings, quarterly meetings to discuss the claims that are out there, and how they came to be, and what we're gonna do with them, with the mayor's office. So I might be able to get a little more detail for you from the claims suggested as to departmental, how it works.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So look, this last lawsuit the city had with the police department, do your company pay that last lawsuit that the city just had with the police department, or what it was, with the five police officers involved in it?
The automobile accident?
No, I think it was like a risk, it was, yeah, it was an accident, started out as an accident, next thing you know, it.
It must be in process, and it's not something that's been paid yet.
Yeah, no, this lawsuit just went through, should've been early part of this year.
Okay, and we probably, that probably hasn't been settled.
Okay, well, the due will come from you all. Okay, well, did due will come from you all, right? Or the?
Goes through us, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And one more question.
It might be, it may be being handled by attorneys at this point.
Yeah, okay, I see on here sewage bag up. Explain that to me, please. Uh, go to page two. On my sheet, I don't know-
Oh, okay, yeah. Well, if, if due to the negligence of the city of Hammond, and there was backup of sewage due to the negligence, not due to nature, but due to the city of Hammond's refusal to repair something, then they would have coverage for it.
Okay, 'cause we've been going through this a lot in District Three, and guy right there, so he pretty much, I'm just going by what he said about the grease in the line and stuff, in the sewer line, so.
I wasn't aware of that.
Excuse me?
I wasn't aware of that.
Okay, no, I was looking down, I was trying to see where the voice came from, okay. So I see, we got a problem right here, 'cause what's going on? They always tell me to tell them to go to H R. And so when they go to H R, H R will tell them ain't nothing they can do, it's their problem. And so H R will never contact you and let you know about the sewer they've been bagging up in the people houses, and we're not talking about a storm now, we're just talking about-
I'm not aware of it, no.
All right.
If it, if it gets to my desk, it's Hammond.
Okay, all right. That's it with me.
Any other questions?
Number one, I'd like to know who's the company that you brokered to take care of the, the insurance for the city of Hammond for one year?
The package is with Travelers Insurance Company.
Is this the company you've been for the last year or two?
Yeah, the last three years.
With the city?
Mm-hmm.
And what was the annual premium you set for that, coverage and everything?
For everything, workers' comp, everything?
Mm-hmm.
One million, eighty-three thousand, whatever.
That's the premium for the city of Hammond?
Yes.
To cover all the employees?
And their employees as well, yes.
One million what?
One million, eighty-five thousand, three hundred forty-five dollars and thirty-nine
How many companies did you inquire with this insurance coverage for the city of Hammond?
For which one?
For the complete?
No, they're, they're-
They're all, they're all separate different companies, so you have it with different companies?
Yes.
So I don't know-
The package, the package is with Travelers.
The total package was one million, eight hundred fifty thousand dollars per year?
With all the different companies that we have insurance for.
And that gives coverage to the police and the fire department?
Yes, sir.
And insurance for the employees of the city of Hammond?
Yes, sir.
And let's see, now does that, does that include hospitalization and all this for the people, or what? It's just the, just the work, work with comp?
Not, not.
Okay. And let's see. The last year or two, what was the, did you have the premium, how much it was last year or year before last?
Yes, sir.
And how much was that?
Last year, nine oh seven, one eighty-six. Year four, eight seventy-seven, eight fifty.
So it's just about doubling in the premiums?
No, sir.
Well, you said nine oh seven, nine hundred seven thousand, right?
Yes.
And now you're telling me eight, one million, eight hundred fifty?
No, one million, eighty-five thousand.
Ah, one million, eighty-five, okay. Well, it's still, what is, how much is that? What percentage is that roughly? Twenty percent increase? So the city of, the city councils are kind of aware of what, what company it is? Y'all dealt with this company previously? Okay, I'm well, I'm, I'm aware of, of your company. I guess what I was looking at was, did they have any other companies participate on this bid, or, or is this just a bid from you every year? Lacy, Ms. Lacy?
I'm not sure I understand. Don Steele's our broker, so he handles all the negotiations with the, with the companies.
What I was asking was, has this, any other insurance company or broker had approached the city of Hammond for coverage for the year of twenty-two to tw- through twenty-three?
No, not to be the city's broker, is that what you're asking?
I don't know, you, I'm trying to figure this out, that's what I'm saying. Have you had anyone else that was a broker to approach y'all, the city, with a bid for this contract?
No. We don't have another broker for the city for these items. We have a broker for health insurance, and we have a broker for our property and our workman's comp insurance and all of our other insurances.
Well, Mrs. Steele said that he has different companies that he represents, correct?
Yes.
In that way, each one is entirely different, whether it's for the police department, the fire department, or the city employees?
And you bid out through all of them.
And you bid, so you bid out through your, through your company, or through your?
Yes, sir.
And that's come, the lowest bid you got through these?
Yes, sir.
How many companies did you actually approach for?
It depends on the line, but I think on property, it was somewhere around thirty.
That's just on the property line?
Just on property. On the package, we did a full blown bid last year, and we don't, we don't stick our neck out or show everybody our work every year. It doesn't serve a good purpose for the city of Hammond.
Now, how long have you been insuring the city of Hammond?
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years, wow. I guess you're doing a fantastic job, apparently.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sal. Ms. Lacy, did any of the sewer complaints, for all the complaints that we had, was any of them turned into the insurance company?
Yes, they were. They were turned into Joanne, and then the adjuster would look at them and determine whether they were natural causes, or whether there was work orders performed related to them, and how we should proceed from that point.
Who was Joanne?
Joanne.
My assistant, she handles commercial insurance.
She then handled getting the claim to the company, or would help us evaluate whether the claim was even eligible to go to the company.
So I think I just asked this question, and-
It, they don't come, those did not come across my desk. They may have gone to Joanne, and Joanne turned them into the adjuster, but those, I didn't see them myself.
Okay. All right.
I wasn't aware of them.
Okay. Uh, thank you, and I'm gonna say this here, Mr. Sal, Mr. Sal asked the same questions that the city councilmen should be asking, and then I'm gonna say this here, the numbers, just for the administration, even for you, Mr. Dunn, if you had to, it'd be good when the audience, the taxpayers can see on a screen what you're talking about, you know? The city councilmen get it, but if it would have been on the projector, Mr. Sal could have looked up there and said, okay, the city just spending a million dollars on insurance, you know, that's what he can say. So it, it, we have to make it better for the citizens to understand, and a lot of the questions that Mr. Sal was asking, really, I can hear you 'cause I'm in this room, but nobody else can hear. So we're gonna have to do a better job in cases like that, and we have to get more involved. So I'm gonna say this here, thank you, Mr. Dunn, thank you, Mr. Sal, 'cause these are the questions that need to come from the city councilman. I wasn't gonna ask no questions, and I'm gonna tell you why. When you said entertainment, I thought about TV, and I don't see where's entertainment at when the taxpayers got to spend a million dollars. So I don't see the entertainment part myself. So you said entertainment, you, you really lost me then, because I know darn well, I don't want to be up here to entertain nobody, but I try to look at the money as if the money was in my account, and as one city councilman, that's what all of us supposed to do. We supposed to look at the money, we supposed to manage the money as if it's in our account. So I just wanted to say that, and thank you for what all you said and what all you did. And I did send my question in earlier, you said I didn't ask tonight, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Pleasure to the council.
Make motion to approve.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number five?
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract on behalf of, on behalf of the city of Hammond with Lawson Benet Construction, Inc., to rehabilitate Chevy well in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, Sky Pearlama.
This is actually a water well behind Atmos Energy. We're going in and changing all the pumps, piping, valves, everything in there stamped nineteen seventy-one, nineteen seventy-two. We've got several leaks, we can't get parts fixed. Actually, I've one pump been down since October last year. We've had three of the reps that can't hold it. Well, we have the whole station, new pumps, new piping, more efficient pumps.
That's the one over there, Atmos, right there on South Morrison Boulevard?
Yeah, right behind the Chevrolet.
Okay, yeah, in that area, okay.
It's all-
So that services pretty much all Hammond, or?
Well, all our wells are tied together.
Okay.
Yeah. We have, like, we have two booster stations, two different pumps.
How long is that project usually going to take, and when it starts, that like?
Well, the biggest thing is now, once we get it approved?
Yeah.
The pumps are sixteen weeks out.
So sixteen weeks.
We even get the pumps.
Okay.
So we're looking at probably, one at a time, starting the job close to it.
Is that a, is that a week-long job, or like a month to get in?
It's all inside, clean, no digging, once, once it got all the materials here, pumping a month, three weeks a month, 'cause you can tear one down, you build it and put that one online, then you do the other one. I gotta have one going at all times.
Is this a budgeted project, and it's within budget?
Oh, yes, well, within budget.
Anyone else have any questions on this item? Step to the mic and give us your name and address, please.
David Foster, one oh nine East Stanley Street. I had a chance to go look at those pumps. I worked on those pumps for twenty-eight years. When we was talking about taxpayer dollars, that's a lot of money, one hundred forty thousand dollars to replace those pumps. I worked with the rep of Aurora Pump for over twenty-eight years. The pictures that I looked and what I sent to them, those pumps could run another hundred years at half the cost and get both of them reworked to a brand-new state. I got the email, if y'all want to see it. We're all talking about saving money, putting it into the community, that's what I'm all about, okay? I can show y'all every one of the parts. At first, they said that the parts was obsolete. I got, Mr. Bill Blofman would have been here tonight, the district rep for all the state of Louisiana, but I told him I could handle this. If I need him, I'll call back up, but if you mind, I'll pass all this to you guys.
Yeah, did you show that to Mr. Guy?
No.
Did he see this?
I didn't, he didn't see it, but I wasn't, I wasn't gonna come, I wasn't even gonna say nothing, but it said a closed mouth, never get heard, okay, so.
This is from Mr. Bill.
Excuse me, I want to make it known, he did have the opportunity to bid, he showed up for the bid opening, he did not present, he did.
These are the parts, I'm not worried about it.
Well, don't come and knock our process when you had the opportunity to present the bid and win the bid, if you could have presented a lower proposal.
Let me, let me clear that up. The reason why I didn't want to bid, I wasn't gonna bid, because I didn't like the way that was, I wanted to actually repair. Repair and, and apply warranty, and also maintenance these pumps. These pumps need to be maintained every year, which, something that we could easily set up and put up on a P M system. If you look at the email, that's the state representative from Louisiana. Matter of fact, they, when these pumps were sourced, sourced out in nineteen seventy-four, the same guy sourced those pumps out to the city of Hammond. And every one of those parts that's available, they're on the shelf. So, like I say, I'm not gonna keep my mouth closed anymore. I've been actively in the community, a lot of people know me. These guys can tell you, I'm building a lot of new, a lot of new houses in the District Three. A lot of people don't know me, a lot of people, even you came by and seen one of my houses. If we're gonna use this money, let's put it where it belongs. Let's, let's put it where it belongs, let's make sure that we do the right thing for the people. Like I said, I've been putting a lot of my money, a lot of my effort, a lot of this labor, to trying to get these neighborhoods looking the way that it should, and the price tag that, you know, is half of that, to get these pumps restored to new condition, right at seventy-five thousand dollars. So we talking-
I'm gonna ask you this, it says, this letter you gave, is the pumping question was built for the customer in nineteen seventy-four, that's what they're talking about?
That's these pumps right here that we're talking about.
So why, and this might be a question for Guy, it seems pretty old, right? Is this something that you think you fix and then it can last for another fifty years?
Those pumps could last another hundred years. We, I worked in a chemical plants, and we seen pumps worse than that. We actually go in and rebuild them, back to spec standards, and y'all know some of the things that goes on in chemical plants, they got chemicals there that could eat through metal, and, and it could kill you just by you breathing through it. So all I'm saying is this, when you're talking about, think about your bank account, how much you'd rather spend, a hundred and forty dollars, one hundred forty thousand dollars to run for another twenty, thirty years? You got something there that's proven, that's proven to run, it been running for over fifty years, and you got the company that's right here in Louisiana that's backing it, telling you, look, hey, we're gonna back it a hundred percent, if anything break, you call me, and I'm gonna take care of it. And that's what we need, that's what we need, somebody to stand by for. Like I said, I wasn't gonna say nothing, but why not?
Let me ask you something, Guy, what, what is your response to that? Like, why, why, in your, your opinion, since you're the head of this department, why, why wouldn't y'all rebuild them, and instead of?
I was doing, I met him over there, I was a while this, but he talking about pumps, we talking about motors, we replaced the motors and all the pipes and everything, and I had to grind a well drill in the well, people doing wells, and so every year, it lasts every year?
Talk on the mic, please, just, 'cause I need, I need everything recorded.
Grind a well drill and does the maintenance, he talking about every year, come in, do flow tests, pack them, grease them, and then we maintain throughout the year, so that's something we already do in-house. But we replacing motors, pumps, and going with a vertical type motor, which is less, less maintenance, and we got one, we got one of the motors that's actually just been rebuilt, and the other one is not far from it, not counting the pumps. So we just going to different type motors, all one sealed unit, and change all the valves. But Griner come in and looked at it, actually sent a crew in to tear it down, they couldn't get it fixed, they built a shaft up, didn't get it fixed, and called another crew out of New Orleans, they warranted. That man come in, it's been down since October, and they even brought a rep in for that pump, and he recommend changing it.
So, Guy, ask you a question, when the last time was this pump inspected? When last time?
That pump, that pump that's broke, been offline since October.
Since October?
The one, we got one broke, one running there. Can't get the parts for it. We've been trying forever to get the part, well, people and the actual man out of New Orleans that installs them tight pumps, he's, he's been trying since October, can't get the parts for it.
So-
Seals and all that.
So Guy, we trust you, and you've been working with the city a long time, you saying we can't get the parts, and he saying we can get the part?
I can't speak for him, I don't know. I'm gonna speak behind my well people and the people from New Orleans that come worked on it. It's been down since October.
But if we can save half the money, it's really a conflict, and I'm looking at saving the money.
Well, I mean, if it's down, it's that long, I mean, quick, the quicker fix.
He should have submitted a bid on what he done, and he'd have been the lowest bidder. He should have submitted a bid when the bid was due by. I mean, I, I wasn't aware of all that, he didn't want to submit a bid. I don't handle that part of it.
So Mr. David, I'm gonna ask you, so all these parts Guy talking about, so you saying all these parts can be located?
They're on the shelf.
And they're on the shelf?
Yes. You look at the email, those parts are ready to go.
Well, the whole pumps got replaced, but he, he sent a pump- Well, the whole pumps got replaced, but he, he seen the pump from outside. When you pull the pump apart, where the shaft runs through the pump, the housing's actually got fractures in it. The housing, you, you gotta change, ain't no, ain't no rebuilding that pump. That whole pump's gotta come completely out. When the man come to New Orleans, he showed me, he said, Guy, this pump can't be rebuilt, not only the parts, but look at all, you see just like hair, hairline fractures in the housing. It's been there since seventy-one.
Well, this right here says Fluid Processing Pumps and an Authorized Representative Aqua Pump for the state of Louisiana and has been since nineteen sixty-five. The pump is questioned was built for the customer in nineteen seventy-four and has lasted forty-nine years. We can assure you that all of the replacement parts are still available at this time as well as availability of direct replacement pump without modification. We offer sales, replacement parts and a full-service repair facility. Please see attached source letter you filed. So, this guy here is saying three twenty-three, twenty-three, this. So, I just want to make sure.
Submitted all that, this bid. We only had one bid. Now, this first been getting all that, or two bids. I mean, I have nothing to do with all that.
So, what, it was down since October. Why, why are we waiting now to get it addressed?
Because we're just been trying to find parts for it.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I can actually cut it on and run it manually. It's just, on a merchant basis, but it slings water everywhere because all the fractures, the pump housing.
So, Guy, do you know anything about these people?
Who's that?
This company?
Fluid Processing Pumps LLC. You know?
What about you, Ms. Jana? You know anything about this company?
What are they out of?
Florence, Mississippi.
New Orleans?
Well, and New Orleans. They got two of them, it looks like, two branches.
I'm, I'm a little confused, but this statement here says rehabilitate. Now, rehabilitate to me is they gonna work me back over, you know, and put new parts in or whatever. But on here it says, you know, you got a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars to this construction company, who I know nothing about, but, but it says to rehabilitate. Didn't say anything about a brand-new pump. Guy just said that they was gonna bring in a brand-new pump. Now, if they bring in a brand-new pump, then it might go a little bit more than a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. If they bring in a new pump rather than replacing it, not only the pump, but also the pipes or whatever they need. Is that correct?
That's part of the theory.
Hundred and forty thousand, called two, two brand-new vertical pumps and a piping coming out, will come out of ground, always cause back, everything brand new. Everything from seventy-one, seventy-two, we can put it out and replace.
Okay, but that's not rehabilitating. That's putting in new. On here it says rehabilitate.
Well, when you put it, it's all new.
Okay, well, then we need to clarify that because right here on this, it says rehabilitate, if I'm not correct.
Mr. Sal, we're not, we're not digging a new well. We're not replacing the well in its entirety. We're just doing part of the equipment that works, that runs the well. We're not digging a new well.
I'm well aware you're not digging a new well, Lacy, but that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about to rehabilitate this equipment. This is what says on the four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Now, after that hundred and forty-five thousand...
So, there's a proposal.
Let me finish talking, then you could, then I'll speak to you, okay? Thank you. Number one, in my understanding, the rehabilitate, you know, you're gonna redo everything like this gentleman's talking about buying and, you know, the equipment and whatever it takes to rehabilitate it. Now, Guy's telling me we getting new pumps. Is that correct, Guy? Okay, one pump, two pumps? How many pumps are we getting?
Both.
Okay.
Both boosters.
And each pump costs a hundred and forty-five thousand?
No.
No, that's, that's all the piping, the valves.
Keep on talking, keep on talking.
Again, a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars covers two brand-new vertical shaft pumps, all the piping, the valves, everything from ground up.
I think that the, the here issue we have right here is that the proposal and, and the bid that was accepted was to replace two brand, to replace the pumps with two brand-new pumps, the whole deal right here.
That's everything.
But, well, on this here, ten of project consists of removing the existing two Aqua Split case pumps and motors, installing two new pumps contracted, provide all labor materials for installation, pumps, pipe fittings, electrician to tie in new pumps to existing booster. Now, that's what he's doing. This gentleman here, so David is saying that it doesn't need to be done like that. It could be rehabilitated and this company here is saying that they can rehabilitate it and warrant it and can have it done, I guess, could have probably had done in October or whatnot because they have the parts in stock. That's where my confusion is, is that did we not check with any other companies to see if they had the parts in stock or even the pumps? They may already had this in stock. I don't, I don't know this fluid processing pump. So, I guess that's where my concern is here, is that this company here that Mr. David just brought up, I would imagine, I would hope that the department, the water department would have looked into other possibilities.
I did.
And other, other options that might have had it that were closer.
I said, I called our well people, does yearly management all our wells. They handle all that for us. They come in, they come in and worked on it and it lasted about a week and he called about a New Orleans. It may even been them. I don't know who he, the guy. I don't remember. It's been since October. I can't remember the guy's name.
Well, to me, this is the only disturbing part about it. I mean, this here, I mean, I, I mean, I'm not, I just got this here, so, I mean, but it looks factual to me.
Like I said, we replaced some pump, motor, everything. It had been since seventy-one, seventy-two. We're putting all new pumps, all new motors, going more efficient. The valves that we have, the, we tried to picture with me, to cut it on and off, seal it, they don't even seal off no more. That's what we're telling him. He, he don't get wet working in there because valves ain't even cut off no more.
See, this, this was confusing. You saying one thing, he saying another thing and Ms. Jana said she didn't contact these people. She didn't got parts from them and stuff and it's your department and you telling us somebody that made phone calls, but you can't even tell those?
I didn't contact them on.
No, no, no. Hold up, hold up, hold up. You said somebody made phone calls, but you don't even know who they called. Now, this come from you.
My, exactly. The well people that maintains our wells, yearly maintenance on our wells, grinding drilling on Mississippi, there's initial phone call made them to come repair. When they couldn't, they contacted, coming out of New Orleans, they deal with, that works on them. They warranted the work, where they worked on it. They, they called them to come work on it. They, they come worked on it, but couldn't get it to stop leaking because all the hairline fractures in the pump. He said, he showed me, he said, there's no way this whole pump got be changed.
Yeah, yeah, because see this, so the company that looked at the pump, that's not the company that's bidding on this here, right? The company that's looked at the pump, I'm asking.
They could.
The grinder bid it?
So, the company, okay.
Yeah, the people we actually, we actually did our maintenance, they bid it on it.
Okay.
They'll come, come in cheaper.
So, what company is that?
Grinder.
Grinder Drilling? Fluid, Fluid Processing Pump LLC, this one here. Who is, is this, this?
I got parts from them.
Okay.
That's, we, did they even touch, can I just, I just want to make it very, very, very clear. This was a request for proposals. Mr. Foster met Guy and his other guy out there. At that time, he could have said, hey, we can repair this. I can submit a proposal for repairs and this. He was in my office at nine fifty-five and he kept on saying, I can't get my bid bond. They didn't send you a bid bond. I don't have my bid bond. He sat through the whole process. What's the date on that letter?
Three twenty-three, three twenty-three, twenty-three.
Okay. The bid closed at three twenty-eight. So, he had prime time to submit a proposal for his repairs. And if he says he's gonna save the city so much money, he should have submitted his proposal.
Well, Jan, I, I want to make clear to you, I'm not, I'm not saying you're not doing your job or anything, so I'm not coming. I'm just, when somebody drops us off here and explains this difference here and everything, I was just curious to see what, I was trying to get an understanding of how did this even happen, you know?
I don't understand why he didn't mention that in the site visit. He never mentioned that, hey, I can repair this instead of replacing. And also at the proposal opening, why didn't he not submit it? He kept saying because he didn't get a bid bond. This is the second time that he wanted to turn in a bid without the bid bond. That's suspicious to me.
Okay.
Okay. She said I didn't mention that to Guy. Guy, what was my first question to you? When we did the walkthrough about those pumps?
While we changing?
No, I actually, did we, can we get you more repair?
And I, I tell you, we can get the parts repaired.
Talk on the mic, the mic, the mic.
I tell you, I said, we've been trying, saying totally, been down in October. We've had two, we were coming and working on it, can't get the parts repaired.
And what I tell you, I got all.
No, you didn't, you didn't tell me that.
There you go.
You didn't tell me that.
That's my first question because when I look at the piping, I'm a piping guy. I'm mostly mechanical. When I look at that piping and I looked at all those valves in there, I'm like, man, this isn't an enclosed structure. Why are we changing all this piping? Especially when you're dealing with cast iron piping and you're going to a new pumping, you're gonna have all kind of nightmares and headaches trying to get this cast iron piping to work. So, why not go back and replacement and kind and save all that hassle? That was my first question to him, being a piping guy. You, you're gonna go open up all these can of worms for something that, you know, this pump's gonna do what it needs to do if you just go in and repair it. And that was my exact words to him. It ain't about the bid. If you look, you know, like I said, he was determined not to repair those pumps. He wanted all new. And it don't make sense to go all new because you can get another hundred, hundred and fifty years out of those same pumps you have. Even if we got a, a advanced propelled impeller in there, we can do whatever it can, whatever it needed to do to make those pumps more efficient. His exact words was, I want them all replaced. And that's not the way we need to be talking on the taxpayer dollars. And like I said, I have no reason to sit here and lie to you because I want to see Hammond do better. I want to see the money gets spent where it needs to be. Like I said, that's a little bit of oversight that need to be adjusted. And if you need those, those pumps repaired, my guys can come take care of them within about two weeks. All, both of those pumps will be brand-new again.
You know, I, I like what the gentleman said. He wants to spend Hammond's money wisely. It makes a big, big difference for the taxpayers, you know? He's really concerned. You know, now, we, we having this controversy here, you know, we supposed to rehabilitate for a hundred and forty-two, a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars and then all of a sudden, I'm hearing we got new pumps. There's a difference when I rehabilitate for a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Now, if you told me for a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, they're gonna put new pumps and everything in there, then I'd probably be in favor of it, but I don't really know how much they are, you know? But this gentleman come up with a, with a list of the parts to replace that and he knows what he's talking about, apparently. But, but the big thing to me is this company, Lawson Bonnet Construction, they might say, yeah, okay, we gonna sign a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Then they, after the end, they say, well, look, we had to add some pipes here. We had to add more, more, you know, different things and, and we put up a new pump now, okay? So, we put new pumps. Yeah, I see it now. You pointing to it now, but I don't have that, I don't have that information since I'm only a citizen of the Hammond, Louisiana, okay? Thank you. So, let's go on the aspect of getting to Sal. If he's been there for how many years, Guy? Fifty years, sixty? How many?
Forty, seventy-two, seventy-three.
Seventy-two, seventy-three. So, he's been there, give me a, give me a count. Thirty, forty?
About forty-nine years.
Forty-nine? Fifty years. That's round. I, I like round numbers, fifty. So, if he's been there for fifty years and has been pumping and doing well, there might be a possibility that, you know, the purchasing agent could have maybe checked it out with another company or, or checked it out for the parts to repair it rather than buy a brand-new pump, you know?
Mr. Sal?
Yes?
There was a request for proposal done. It, it's just that simple. I wish he would've, but he chose not to.
Well, we learning, we learning a lot, Leon. We learning a lot.
Well, there's nothing to learn. You either submit a bid or a proposal. In this case, it was a proposal. You either submit it or you don't. You can't come back after the fact. I mean, you know, it's like, it's like Monday morning quarterbacking.
I agree. I agree with that. Monday morning quarterback. But this is a little bit different. This is spending the city taxpayers' money.
Okay.
I'm just gonna say this because I need to go get my daughter prescription, but if it's all about saving money and using the taxpayer dollar where it needs to be, I'm all for it. Now, if you guys want to go and pay a hundred and forty thousand dollars to get a pump that's probably gonna do not as good as what you have, by all means, go do it. But if you want to pay seventy-five thousand dollars and you gotta guarantee that this pump's gonna run for another ten, fifteen, maybe a hundred years, that's the route that I would go to. So, it's in you guys' hands.
And the bid, the bid was drawn up for replacement, I guess, not, not repair. So, that's maybe another reason why you didn't get anybody bidding on it because?
Yes.
Yeah.
Again.
Because you're saying they can repair and they were wanting to replace.
Again, cast iron piping, it don't deteriorate.
It deteriorates.
Do you have UT thickness readings on it?
I just changed two tennis check valves that was totally eat up from the chlorine. The two check valves you saw, we, this we gonna use?
Do you have UT thickness readings on those fittings?
Do I have what?
UT thickness reading.
I got a check valve come out of it laid up from the chlorine.
I understand, but when we start talking piping, you got piping that runs miles and miles underneath the city. We gonna dig all that up too. But when you start talking UT readings and getting those inspection reports, that's when you start talking dollars. But I'm assured that, that piping is in good shape. I've been doing it for thirty years and that's my, that's my feel. So, hey, hurry, y'all wanna do it. I'm just putting the information out there so everybody can see it. That's all.
Did you look at that pipe that they talking about? You looked at it?
Yes, I have. I looked at it. I even brought my guys out there too.
You can only see the outside. You can't see the inside. Good sound, it's like barnacle with the chlorine. I mean, it's right there. It's from here that probably from chlorine.
Thank you, David, for the information. And unfortunately, you know, if you'd have put a bid in, we wouldn't be arguing about this at the moment, you know? But, Mr. Guy, I know he does an excellent job. I've seen his work. And if it means to take, you know, with new equipment versus repairing, then that hundred and forty-two thousand dollars is, seemed like appropriate. So, the city council gotta decide on that. Thank y'all.
My, my only comment is, so I don't know anything about pumps or pipes, right? We're here relying on our department heads and you telling us what is the best course of action. We're, we're complying with Louisiana law by having things, you know, rules and regulations on how people can bid for these things. If you think that this is appropriate to go back out and determine whether it can be replaced and repaired, I think that that is something you need to tell us. Additionally, there's other things other than saving taxpayers' money. I absolutely agree. I want to pay, you know, save taxpayers' money, but is repairing mean that for ten years, we're constantly maintaining, whereas something is brand-new? We have that issue with, with vehicles, you know, get a new vehicle so that we don't have to continuously pay to the repairs and replace. There's different factors that weigh in and we have to be good stewards of city's money, but we have to rely on people who have the knowledge and expertise to tell us that what is the best value for our dollar.
Well, when they come in and worked on that pump last year and tore it all down, he brought my attention. And actually, I met with Lacy. I sent her pictures, all, all ate up. You could see inside the pipe, the actual basin where the pump is bolted down to the concrete. It's not even there no more. The motor sitting on the floor. It's all rotted out. I mean, I'd be glad to meet anybody out there tomorrow, let them look at it. But when we tore it down, the well man told me, Guy, you just out of town, you gonna start spraying leaks, which we have a little small leak in one of the nineties. And I have four valves, control valve on both sides of the pumps, they don't even cut off no more. Because they worked on it, I had water that deep in that well room running out the door while they worked on that pump. I, I have nowhere controlling it because the seats and them valves just, they, they gone. Ate out. I mean, it's fifty years old.
Ask your question. Do y'all have a consultant in y'all department?
What kind of consultant? For what?
Because you sit there and said, you called Ms. Lacy out, you sent her the pictures to the pipes and stuff and so, and I wanted to know. Because if you send me the picture, I don't even know what I'm looking at. So, what sense do it make to send me the pictures when I don't know what I'm looking at? And I'm saying a consultant is somebody that knows something different from you, knows something different from me.
Someone was called out. He, he wanna look at it. He said the same, remember, he like a couple of years ago.
On, on the?
He like a couple of years ago to do it, but while I'm doing electrical panel instead of the pumps, it was totally gone. We done that in twenty, twenty-one?
Your mic on?
New electrical panel.
See if it has a green light on it.
Yeah.
Hmm. Oh, you talking too low. That's what it is. You talking too low.
Can you scream?
Yeah.
We put a whole new electrical panel on there and put it. We put a whole new electrical power on it and put it, chose the electrical power and generator first. And then I met with Lacy, part of the year, I took, took pictures of it out there, went all the time in October until we didn't get, I just last year to get on the budget to get it worked on. Well, we done try, my man done packed them pumps. It lasts two days and slays the pipe packing out. Is it, is it, it ain't months in October. I only got one pump running there.
I'm not gonna say nothing else.
So you want us to replace it as the, as the supervisor?
I'll replace it, ma'am.
You've been doing this for a couple decades now.
All of one year.
I don't have a problem relying on your, um, opinion based on expertise.
If I wouldn't have had somebody look at it and not try to work on it some time, you know, I wouldn't recommend changing. But when, but when a man tell you this pump's like a leak, came in the park, boy came about an hour. Next up, we replace it.
Mr. David behind you. Mr. David behind you.
Something really, the mic's not working right. I don't know. Yeah, something's not off, yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, oh yeah.
What did you do?
I just pressed the button.
Oh, my God.
Going to show you. And I ain't been doing this forty years. So, but it's a little bit brighter. And look, it don't take a rocket science. It's a pump gonna do its job. All it does is pump water, no matter how you look at it, okay? You can go get this Grand Fondo pump that they wanna go with, which is a cheaper version of what you have that's already in place. Um, hey, if you wanna go spend a hundred and forty thousand dollars, that's on you. The pump that you're gonna rebuild, you're gonna get, if you look at that port list, you're gonna see two brand new casings that actually rebuild that pump. I sent the port list out to you. You see the casings. And I can show you the item number. If the casings are bad, you buy two new casings and rebuild the whole pump. They're brand new again. You'll see it right there. That's the reason by, why details is everything. Just like you said, you put it on the projector and then everybody could see those parts. Every one of those parts are just basic straight parts. It don't take much to make a pump. Impeller shafts and bearings and seal. He keeps saying that it's splashing water. They got a new thing out there called a mechanical seal. It lasts up to five years without any maintenance.
Mechanical seal is a pack.
Yeah, well, if you look at that port list, it's an upgraded to a mechanical seal where you don't have to use that packing anymore. So I admire you saying that you judge this expertise. Even though these pumps are a little bit old, they got upgrades that come with these packages that you could upgrade them to, to where you could make them suit to your needs. I'm not here trying to sell you a pump. I'm just trying to say that these pumps can be made reliable, made more, more efficient. And at the end of the day, it all depends on how much money you wanna spend. Because I could show you a lot of places where you need to put this money at and make it, uh, work for everybody in the community. That's it. Bottom up.
Thank you, David. Okay. I've been here too long. It started at five-thirty. It is already eight-fifteen. I had appointment at eight o'clock, but I'm gonna hang here a little longer, okay? First thing, whoever printed or whoever wrote the authorization to the mayor to contract on behalf of the city of Hammond with Lawson Bonnet Construction Incorporated to rehabilitate, number one, not brand new. So it has to be clarified that it is being brand new. Am I right, the mayor? Am I right, mayor?
You're rehabilitating the well. So it's all depends on how you wanna look at it. So you mixing words, Sal.
Well, that's okay.
It's gonna be a brand new pump. You have a pump that's fifty years old. No matter what you replace on it, it's fifty years old. And if it doesn't work, then we're gonna go back and spend more money. So as you said earlier, you're spending the money and you're getting brand new equipment, which you agree with, or you did temporarily.
I did agree with it and I still agree with it. I'm just saying on this brochure that I have here, it says rehabilitate, mayor. It's anything by brand new. Excuse me? The well?
Right. What's the pump sitting?
Yes, Chevy well, which I don't even know where Chevy well's at.
Ross Down and Chevrolet.
Oh, well, thank you for that information. Okay, I see it now, but it, nothing was up there previously. But that's okay. You know, the public is pretty stupid and, and, you know, I think the people think the public is stupid. But I think it's time for the public to start standing up and make accountable to the city council, the mayor, the purchasing agents, the people that are representing us that are not doing their job, number one. And I got proof, believe me, of things that's going on in the city of Hammond that will be coming out pretty soon. Now, either y'all figure out, you're the council people, okay? The mayor can't do anything unless y'all approve it. Is that correct? Am I right?
Not necessarily.
Okay, well, not necessarily since you the attorney, you represent a little bit different. So I'm not gonna worry about you. I'm gonna ask Steve, okay?
We're here for, we're here for oversight.
Okay. You're elected to represent the people of your district. Am I right? Thank you. Sam, you're elected to represent the people of District Three. Is that right?
District Four, yes, sir.
Four. Ah, made a mistake. I wanted Devine, but I seen he left. Or maybe he went to get coffee. Kip, I know you, I know you have a deep heart because you were kinda forced into the position of being the president. You got all the headaches. And Ms. Carly, she's very well educated. She's an attorney. So it seemed like between the five of y'all, with the assistance of the purchasing agent, the assistance of Lacy Lanham, Director of Administration, and the mayor of Hammond, could kinda make it a little bit better for the city of Hammond. And what I mean by that, you need to look around. Yeah, we got the city of Hammond got the cleanest city. Is that correct? But they didn't go any further than maybe five, four, five blocks. They didn't come out to District Three and District Four.
That's not true.
I beg your pardon?
Just not true.
Uh, Ms. Lacy, uh, I, I was with Lieutenant Governor Billy Nungeser. I was on a committee with the parish. But you're not gonna tell me that it's not true because I know, because I live there. And they got enough garbage on the streets. From one ninety, from Walmart back to crap down the road, there's enough garbage for you to take a dump truck, about ten of them, and load it up, okay? Have you been out there, Ms. Lacy?
Yes, sir. I've actually picked up trash. I have actually picked up trash there.
I beg your pardon?
I have actually picked up trash there.
Well, good for you.
I picked up trash in District Three two weeks ago. I picked up trash on one ninety today.
That's not what I'm discussing. I'm discussing that. I'm not discussing that. I'm discussing that the mayor, the city council has an obligation to the city taxpayers of Hammond, Louisiana. Nothing else. Thank you.
You agree with that.
All right. Number five. Motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divertario?
I'm staying.
Of course. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
No. No. No.
Resolution number six.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract on behalf of the city of Hammond with DPC Enterprises in the estimated amount of sixty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars. Jana Swallow?
Good evening. Um, this is a rebuild of our annual contracts. This is for the chlorine. That is for our water wells. Um, DPC is the only one that submitted an actual proposal. We had a no bid proposal that was sent in. And the only other company that, uh, Services Louisiana did not send in a bid. So we're asking for council's permission to move forward with contract.
Real quick, Jana, I wanted to thank you for the very diligent, um, documentation and explanation of all these things that we are voting on, that are submitted to us and hyperlinked on the, um, website. So everyone in the public has a chance to do, uh, to see what it is that we're voting on and that, and that we are well aware long before we sit up here of what is on our agenda.
Anyone from the public? Anyone question from anyone on the council? Pleasure to the council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divertario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye. Thank you, Jana. Reports, mayor?
I think we have a lot more conversation coming. I'll pass on it.
All right.
To the council reports.
Council reports?
I'll, uh, just make a comment and invite people to a town hall that I'm doing next Tuesday, uh, April eighteenth at five PM to discuss, uh, imp, uh, golf court ordinance that we're working on. Uh, of course, it'll come for a public hearing and, and everything, but this is just to get some general feedback from people who are interested. Council chambers, five PM on Tuesday. Eight, the eighteenth.
Uh, you finished?
Yes, that's it.
Okay. My council report gonna be on, we had a killing. We had a killing in Martin Luther King Park. I done said it several times that we need cameras. We need to protect the people that go to the park. There's nothing else I wanted to talk about. And for two days I couldn't sleep. That person could have been somebody's child. I take it real serious. When somebody, white, black, brown skin, it doesn't matter. When somebody get killed, and what we do about it. And I asked, I asked a family member to come out tonight. It wasn't in Mooney Park. And I sit here and say this here, how long I been asking for cameras? How long I been asking for speed bumps? You all might not go to these parks. My family member go to these parks. We have to do a better job. And I don't need nobody to give me a long speech and tell me some good things. I asked about security in the park. Just in case y'all don't know, and I'm saying y'all because seem like a lot of times I'm talking to the walls. In black areas, we know where the crimes at. Mooney Park, it's a crime area. For police to come in the area, can't get them in the area. The police just flew through my area, what, Thursday? Wednesday, Thursday, they had a shooting in Lincoln Park. And I called the police department and I said, the police just flew through the area flying. Could have hit a kid right by Mooney Park. Now I'm calling on citizens that stay in the area was flying. I say, I can't tell on the police? So do I tell on these here people? I, I don't have a choice. You know, I don't sit in that, that, that area where you sit in, where we don't have this problem. I sit in a problem area. From speed bumps to cameras to everything, we just approved for the police to monitor the park. I've been having cameras in the park for the longest. And guess what? The police been having access to the cameras. They got cameras in what the feeding seat building you got over there, Kip? Yeah, they got cameras over there. And see, one thing about us, and I'm gonna say this here. Black people are scared to call the police because when the police come out, Devon Wells called the police. That's what they do us. And y'all don't understand. I'm saying y'all, from the city council to the administration, y'all don't have those issues. But one of the, one of the city council in fire area, the four-wheelers, the dirt bikes. See, Devon, I, I can't call the police 'cause the police come right to my house. But yet they go tell the people, I called the police. And then when the chief get in trouble from beating a guy in a booking room video, the police not being subpoenaed, they can't even talk. And they wanna talk, but they can't even tell on the chief 'cause they gonna get punished. When will it stop? We have to come up with something to make Hammond better for everybody, not just one person. And I got Ms. Wilmer here and the family. This Cedric, this is people. We can't have death in Hammond like this. You know, if he was a part of something, it'd be different. Just somebody driving by. We can't have this. And, and we not gonna act like it's nothing wrong. It's something wrong. But guess what? And I mean this here. When we had issues downtown Hammond, when the shooting took place downtown Hammond, guess what you did? Next couple of weeks, we voting on cameras for downtown Hammond. What I asked for? Give me the cameras. This what I asked for. Give me the speed bumps. Stop stopping me when I asked for something. It's not for me. My daughter, twenty-eight years old. She don't even stay in Hammond. I do not fight for my family. I fight for the community. We got five districts in Hammond. People from you all district have called me. And guess what? I'm telling them, this what you do. This how you do it. And I'm saying that because you know why? They know I'm concerned. That's why they called me. I'm not all of that. I'm just concerned about the people. And I hope one day that you will feel the same way. You just spent a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars on a pump that's been out since October. Look how long we talked about that. You just spent a million dollars on insurance. Look how long we talked about that. No conversation, but a death, a death. I shouldn't even have to talk about this. The reports should be coming from the city administration. No, they can't go to y'all office and talk. Because you know why? You gonna tell them what they wanna hear. They need to know, keep it from happening again. That's my concern. We can't keep losing people for foolishness. Ms. Wilmer, you wanna come up now?
Devon, Safe Haven had cameras on it. And that may be the very reason why we can solve this case. There were cameras out there in that park. We're working, as you know, to put fiber into all of the parks to get cameras everywhere. But there were a couple of cameras in that park that did catch, uh, a good bit of what was going on. So hopefully that will help us with this.
Thank you. You can come up, Ms. Wilmer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Wilmer Banks. One fifteen, this is Wausau Lane, Hammond, Louisiana. Y'all excuse me 'cause I am hurt. That was my nephew got drive-by shooting Sunday, Easter Sunday over here at Dr. Luther King Park. I had a nephew, nineteen eighty-one, Mooney Park. He got killed in the back of Mooney Park.
Say it on the mic where everybody can hear you.
He got killed in the back of Mooney Park. What I'm here to say that, like the council well said, we need our police force to get involved with these, our, like I said, our black community function that they giving out. We need some policemen, uh, force. I'm here to say, it just sad the way our black boys is killing one another. It really is. And it hurts me so bad. And I pray, I pray for each and every one color. I mean, black, white, whatever. I pray for all children. I got two, I got two twins. Just here for, I, I wanna get this to the chief of police. I don't know who the police officer is.
He can hear you. He back there.
Stand up. He a twin. He got two tickets in the same week. They stopped him twice in the same week. The, both of them is right now paying in Hammond Court on payment plan for tickets. But the thing about the, the internet and, and the neighborhood, stopping them, giving them tickets. But what we really need them for is not there.
Ah.
We need them where we giving, where they outgiving function for the, uh, our black community people that's out there. Because Lord knows, I'm here to... Because Lord knows, I'm here to say, I'm praying, we not gonna have too many black brothers and sisters because they killing one another. They killing one another. And I'm just here to say tonight, that we need police force more often to do their duty and their job. But like I said, I don't know who this, the police officer is. I had the ticket, but I left the ticket at home. My grandson and my, I got, they twins, both of them got tickets. By the same police officer. And I don't know what the poli- I don't know what that police officer got against them, you know, I mean, because they, they mama work in the plant. And they dr- they, they work, they don't drill drugs, they don't drink, they don't smoke. Their mama drive, um, what's that car your mom drive? She drive a Lexus. I don't know because they think she, I mean, they in the Lexus that they doing something they ain't got no business, but their mama work, she paying for that. It's no drug dealing that. She works hard for that. And those two boys, they been working ever since they been in high school. And all I'm here to say, that we need more police force in our community. Because it's too much killing, fighting, killing is going on right now. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Wilmer. Yeah, one minute. Um, I'm gonna say this here, I done said it several times. When we have functions in the park, we need police present in the park. We need signs in the park, letting folks know they got cameras in the park. We need speed bumps around the park. We need stop signs around the park. All this here stuff I'm asking for, is for the safety
That's right.
of the kids. And that's all I ask for, and I been asking for, you know, every park should have cameras. Not just one park, every park should have whatever it takes for a kid to go to that park and be safe. That's all I ask for, been asking for, but yet, I'm still yet to get a police to sit in Mooney Park. With us, just in case you don't know, when twenty of us get together, some hell gonna come out of it. We need the police to be around. I don't need you to come around after he dead, after she dead. After she done got raped, after he done got raped. I need you to come around before all this take place. One thing I learned, when getting the chief, I thought the chief was gonna help with the community. I really did. I didn't know the chief gonna make it hell for the community. We need the police presence, that's all I been asking for, for the park. I'm not asking you to sit by my house. I need you to be in the park where the kids are, the young folks.
That's true.
If not, and I'm gonna say this here, bullets don't have no name on them. They not gonna keep shooting in these black parks. When they shoot downtown, these little meetings y'all have, you solved the problem. Let's do it when the people don't look like you, let's solve the problem, please. That's it for right now, I'm gonna let the other councilmen talk then, I'm gonna start back talking some more.
I, I wanted to ask about, uh, utility lines, I see someone beginning cutting trim downtown in some areas, is that, who's cutting that energy, subbing that out, or is that, uh, communications? Okay, 'cause I, there's some areas, I don't know if they started downtown and working out, out of the way, but there's some areas in my district that needs it, and I didn't know, how did that work? Because it seems like every time the residents call me up, they tell them no, or whatever, and so I just wanna make sure that, you know, is there a list they have to get on, or, or which, how did this start now? I'm glad to see it, I mean, I want it everywhere.
Both companies actually do it. Whether it's telephones, cable, or whatever, energy, they contract folks to come out and clear their lines.
What I meant, how, how did they, how did this get initiated, I'm going around, I'm glad to see it.
That was on their own.
Okay, okay.
It's part of their maintenance program.
Okay. Do, do they, they don't show y'all, tell y'all anything about where, any kind of like?
Not unless there's a complaint, and then you give it to us, and we'll ask them to
Okay.
thread themselves to that area.
Okay.
Anything else? Yeah, Ms. Veronica, you have something to say? Yeah, yeah.
Hi, I'm Ms. Lewis. Well, my question to her, I'd ask you, can I, was it okay if I asked her? Like, you know, did her?
That's your grandkid?
Yeah. Your kid? Give her the descriptions of the vehicles. Because it's two. One is Gideon, Gideon, if I'm saying it correct. And it's another little short one, driver turquoise, blue car with New York plate. Stop me. Two, it was a line, you didn't stop me at the heritage. I would not let my window down, because the one with the mask, it was real scary, no name tag, I don't know you. And I mean, if anyone know me, hey. You know, I'm easy to be pushed, and you're gonna respect me because I give everyone respect, everyone. So, he stops, and I'm like, what did you stop me for? Give me your I.D. and your registration and your taillights. I say, no, I'm not. So, he asks again, give me your I.D. You know what I'm saying? Anyway, he gets, he walks behind, and he say he was gonna break my effing window. And I say, sir, you don't wanna do that. I say, because the owner of this vehicle, I said, will come and break your... I say, and I'm gonna roll over all ten of your toes if you bust that back window. And I meant it, you know? I'd had to pay the consequence, whatever. But he was pissed because I say, no, you wouldn't tell me what you stopped me for. So, anyway, I went in, you know, the steps, like man, how they do. I call his supervisor, his supervisor, they got him up there. He listened to the recorder. Anyway, he end up saying, you have two taillights. I say, okay. I say, also call the car wash, you know, they done it, they messed my lights up, they pop on, off, on, off. I say, but I appreciate you from telling me that I have two. I said, because I didn't have any, like, five minutes ago. I said, but I really thank you, I'm recording, he's on my recorder. So, the supervisor come in, he listen to my recorder. He say, just go to court on that. I say, go to court? I say, who's next? He didn't answer, I said, 'cause you just waking up, you know? I said, okay, I'm gonna call in Turner Fair. Turner Fair did not contact me until the day, the day before court. I say, okay, I've been leaving you message for months, my name, my number, everything. I say, now you answer. I say, you know, I have court tomorrow. I say, but I don't have the ticket, I didn't accept it.
And this the Turner Fair for Hammond?
For Hammond. The day before, I say, now you answer, because you know my court date is tomorrow. I say, but I don't have a ticket. You know, I don't have a ticket. I say, common sense. I say, common sense is, is so simple, just to use your common sense. I say, you hear him telling me I have two taillights? On the tick, no taillights. So, I got kinda upset, and I wouldn't let it go. I was at the police station like I was a policeman, really.
Yeah, well, we got, uh, somebody back here, he might can speak on it, he might know about it, he might not.
Anyway, let me, I need to ask this, and it's very, very important. I have a twenty-six-year-old daughter, she's a pharmacy tech. I spoke with Mr. Ricardo, my brother, he was there, say he's good, he's gonna hear you out. I asked him, she was a minor. They called me up, it was Stacy, I can't think her last name, Scott, it was her, her daughter. Anyway, they called me up, say, ma'am, take your child to school, she has nothing to do with this. You know, the people for Walmart, say she, she's not involved with this. Bergeron, which I wasn't speaking on it here, because I'm writing all my letters, you know, so I could turn it in. Bergeron, you know, by her with my raising, she know the rights. So, he got pissed at her because she knew her rights. So, he let the ones who he arrested drive their cars. And you put my child in your vehicle? My baby's a pharmacy tech, she moved to Houston. And she broke down, say, mama, they treating me like I'm a criminal. That's not supposed to, one of them, they flip up there, you know, at the city hall of the ladies. I say, so you guys not answering the phone, my child have to work, you know? I mean, it's expensive living there, she can't, she needs to go straight to work. She had transferred her license, everything. She wasn't answering the phone. So, when he came down, he got her, she answering. That's when my baby was able to go to work, three months without going to work, just like I told him, I told them, I said, I'm not paying the quarter. She did not see her judge, she was a minor, she wasn't in trouble. All I need to ask, I've called Jefferson Parish, I've called all over, and they say they do what? They hold y'all names like it shows up. I have another daughter, Lil' Cocky Jersey, that's the name I gave him. She calls him on her job, a girl just went, scratched her right between her eyes. My daughter got arrested, lost her job, she was the manager at the Shell in front of the mall, because he... They need to take him and teach him, because they don't know what they're doing. They don't. Majority of them. Last night, it was a situation in Seymour.
So, was this all with the Hammond City Court?
This is all with, uh, to be with everything. I don't understand how their name, my baby have to really walk around with a paper that's gonna fade, those words fade. For once, she's not supposed to have that. She's n- she's not supposed to. She didn't meet the judge, she wasn't in trouble. Why is her name still sitting there everywhere my baby move? She moved on Monroe to go to U.L.M. I had to go right back up there, get another paper, and fax it to the school. But she didn't meet court, she's not in trouble. I mean...
What is it?
And I keep telling them, I say, why should I have to pay to remove her name? It's not supposed to be there.
And that's...
So, I mean, those type of things, you know? And I'm gonna be honest, I'm willing to go first, I just talk, I called the governor like three days ago about my grand- oh, yeah, I go for her. Called Bill Cassidy, and when he don't do anything, call Bill Cassidy, Bill Cassidy sent my paper. I have a trellis, I'm still displaced because of Hurricane I. You know what I'm saying? I give it to God. I used to break down, but you know, I don't, yeah, I'm stronger now. It's out there, the screen door, the roof, everything, still just sitting, where it's hidden from Hurricane?
Angelo, do you, do you know anything about this?
No, I don't.
It seem like the problem with the city court. Yeah, it sound like that's one of the issues at the city court.
I, you came up to my truck. You came up to the truck when I was about the ticket with Gideon. Giddy, Giddy is G.I.E.D., he's an officer. Anyway, anyway, I tell you what, I take that back, you guys, I'm sorry. He's a narc. Supervisor say, he's a narc, he stopped. Are you that lady with the G.I.A. Say, sir, don't wish, I don't wanna hear nothing like that. I say, I'm an alien, that's what I am to this place. I say, I don't get in trouble. I say, I don't get in no trouble. So, he gave me that ticket, I went to court, and I'm like, two days after he stopped me, and I did say, my cane, I have two canes in the truck. I ran down the street, had three phones, same two. I say, sir, what did, what did, um, they stop you for? I don't know, ma'am. And the other one say, taillights. I say, so, I keep telling you, you wishing and wanting to catch something so you can go further? I say, everyone don't live like that. I say, so you stopped me the other day, and then you called two more trucks? So, anyway, it was during the daylight, I say, look at those police trucks, stop them, stop them and give them a ticket, no taillights, taillights don't show in the daytime. They don't show in the daytime, but it's a lot, it's a lot.
Yeah, 'cause we got, yeah, 'cause we got somebody else, uh... Thank you, Ms. Veronica, but, uh, the ch- uh, the assistant chief, he say he don't know nothing about it.
I'm not, I'm not aware of anything she spoke of tonight.
What's the name of that?
Angelo Monaster. I definitely was not on the traffic stop that she's referring to, that I may have been, that's absolutely incorrect.
Oh, I didn't say you were on the traffic stop.
Okay, uh, Wallace, in the audience, do you have something to say? Huh? Okay.
You need to come on.
Tell him to come in here.
You need to come inside.
You can come in here, they not gonna bite you, you ain't gonna go to jail. Oh, I can't say that now.
Good evening, council. Uh, my name is Bridget Miller, this is my husband, Patrick Miller. The address is thirteen thirteen M.C. Moore Road that we're talking about. We received on yesterday a letter stating that our occupational license is being revoked. The license is for firewood, P.M. firewood, and the license is being revoked, and I'm really just trying to understand why the license was being revoked, because what's on the letter that we received is incorrect information. So, I'm really trying to find out what, um, you know, why, why the license was revoked. We went through the process of what it was supposed to be, what we were supposed to do in order to get the license and to get the E.I.N. number, or whatever it's called, to get everything straight, making sure that we follow all the codes, you know, based off of what we were told. When they asked me, how much firewood were we talking about, were we talking about a small amount of firewood, or a large amount of firewood, less than fifty thousand dollars? Yes, definitely, it's less than fifty thousand dollars. So, when we received this letter on yesterday about the license being revoked, I'm just not clear on why.
My understanding is that you informed the permit department that this was a part-time job, something y'all were doing, very little firewood cutting. Complaints came in, we addressed them, I personally went out there and looked, there's a tractor, there's ten or so logs, and I mean logs from here to the other side of the building right there, that y'all are cutting. People that live in a residential area do not wanna hear chainsaws going on all day, and... and heavy, and your tractor buzzing around with these things.
They don't hear chainsaws.
Hmm, if the chainsaw is running, they hear them. That is a residential area. You shouldn't have got, you should not have gotten that occupational license as far as I'm concerned.
So who gave it to her?
We did. But they came in and said it was, you know, they wasn't doing-
Less than fifty thousand. It is-
It's a residential area.
They knew it was a residential area when they gave it to us.
They made a mistake then.
So then that's my problem because they made a mistake?
Absolutely. It's our problem. We corrected it.
Okay, so you're correcting it. It's costing me money though.
Well, you know what-
Or I get reimbursed for that?
Isaac Robinson called me today on your behalf. I said, Isaac, this can't happen. We have people that work hard every, every day. They go home. They don't wanna hear that.
We don't work hard? Is that what you're saying?
You need to work hard in an area that you can do that type of work.
When we got the permit-
Apparently has a place for you to possibly do this.
Well, I, I understand that. But when we got the permit, we were in the right area and they knew where we were. You had Bobby Mitchell to come twice, and I say you, meaning the city, had Bobby Mitchell to come twice. And he came and he said that there was nothing that they can do, that, that the, the machines that they were running were no more louder than what a lawnmower be. So there was nothing that they could do. But now, all of a sudden, oh, you, your license is revoked.
Correct.
That's unfair.
It, it is fair.
So do I get reimbursed for money that I spent?
The fifty dollar, what did you spend for your occupational?
Well, I didn't only have to spend for occupational. I had to file for the, uh, federal ID number as well.
Well, you need to keep that because obviously you wanna keep doing that, right?
Cause I didn't need that because I don't, I'm not in the commercial business. I don't, I don't need, uh, uh, what you call a number because I only wanna cut firewood for myself. But when you come out, you tell me that I gotta do this, so I'm going with the city on doing what the city say do. See, if the city don't tell me I gotta go do this, I don't do this.
So hold up, sir. You saying you couldn't wood for yourself?
Yeah, for myself and, and then family members and neighborhood too. I clean up in the neighborhood. I help people in the neighborhood.
So, so somebody came out and told you need to get licensed?
Yeah, Casey, whatever his name, come out and said we had to, he shut me down and said I needed to get, uh, occupational business license. So that's what I did.
Cause see, I'm a little lost now. Cause that mean can't nobody cut wood at their house period. I'm, I'm lost.
That's what he said.
That means that we can't cut wood at our house. That's what that means. Because there are other people who will cut wood.
You could do it, you could do it downtown. You could do it on one ninety. You can, you could do it anywhere but on M C Moore.
What, when you say downtown, what you mean?
Uh, downtown at the, where you get, uh, right next to Lee's where you get your, uh-
Right by Andre's office, I think. Talk about, right where the bus parks on the sidewalk, right over there.
Come tell me I got too much-
It's a commercial area.
Commercial area.
And the one on one ninety was addressed right after they went to you as well. I, I think we have some other people that may wanna speak on this.
Well, I, I, if I can, I still like to ask another, an additional question. You mentioned that there were complaints. Um, did you verify these complaints? Do you know who the people were that made the complaints? Because I, you know, you're right here, you're right here, but there's also Patricia Reed right back here where she just walked out. Patricia Reed, her name was on one of the complaints. Her name was on one of the complaints. And she came in with us saying that she never made that complaint. So how do you verify these complaints? How do you know that these people are actually who they are? Or do you not know that and just take the word of-
We know because we've gone out there and, and passed while you're cutting with a chainsaw. There's logs.
Okay, well, that's all fine and dandy. I understand that. But, but I'm asking you, how do you know that the people who made the complaints actually-
When we get a complaint, we go out and check.
And you, you, so you talked to Patricia Reed?
I talked to other people. Doesn't matter who I talked to. I personally went out there and checked.
And you said that-
And you're cutting logs. This isn't, you know, I'm not gonna assume that, as Devon said, you're cutting for yourself. They had a pile of trees out there.
Okay, I might have a hundred trees.
There you go.
No, they don't. They leave the property with us. They don't leave the property with anybody else. There's nobody coming to buy logs or coming to buy firewood
Say firewood for sale.
From that yard. There's no sign saying firewood for sale. There's no retail on that property.
Not on the property, but are you taking that, those, that wood to another location to be sold?
Brother-in-law's house?
So that becomes not for you then, that becomes for sale?
Well, but that's, but we have, if we did sell wood, what I'm saying is if we did, we do have an occupational license to do that.
Out of your location? Or in a different location?
No, out of our location because here's the thing. If we, if we sold wood, the person who purchased the wood is buying it from us. Now, what's, what they do with it is up to them. If they sell it, if they keep it, whatever. But we have the license to say that we can sell up fifty thousand dollars or less. So again, my, and I'll make this my last question. How do you know how much wood we've sold? How do you know what the value of that wood is? How can you say? If, if he, like he just said, if he had a hundred trees, how do you know how much wood that's worth? How much money that's worth?
You would report that to the sales tax office.
So have we done that?
So that right here is what we're dealing with. It's a residential area where you are causing a lot of issues with the noise that you're creating with the chainsaw.
I, I totally disagree with what you're saying.
You have that right?
You're right. I have that right. You have the right to disagree with what I'm saying, but what I'm telling you is that what you've done was unfair. That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
I think the most disappointing fact is that it's in a residential area and I don't see how you would have ever gotten occupational license or even been told to get occupational license within a residential area. I'm just, I know, I'm just, it's disappointing. Should have never been told that. If it's in a residential area, it should have, it should have never even been, yo, I believe you. I'm just saying, it should have been suggested. Yeah, it shouldn't have been suggested to get occupational license. It should have been like, you're in a residential area. There's no need to have occupational license because you can't sell or do any commercially wood serving to people at all. Like, you can cut a log in your house or by your house or tree down, but you can't get occupational license to do commercial work in a residential area. So I mean, that should have never been even advised to go get occupational license by the city in the first place. That's where I'm a little more aggravated, disappointed in hearing that. So, I mean, I wouldn't want it going off all night over by my house either, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have been told it. Yeah.
When they came out, they tell me from seven thirty to seven. That's the time they give me.
So who told you get occupational license?
Casey.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Chip, I know you're looking at everybody funny, but that's okay. I missed my meeting, so it don't really matter now anymore. You know, Hammond is supposed to be a beautiful downtown area. And I was coming through Hammond the other day. And soon as, right before I got to Lee's on my left-hand side, see this stack of wood about twenty feet tall? In the city limit, the, the historic district. Now, what I like to know, who gives this guy permission to cut up wood and sell wood right across from Lee's? Inside the historic district? Is there any reason that this guy was able to continue? It's not a, a benefit to the city of Hammond. It looks horrible when the people are passing through. And they look nice at the buildings and all of a sudden they see this stack of wood with a scooter bus, about two or three scooter buses around the corner from it. Uh, I think the city has overlooked a lot of things personally. And when I say the city, I mean the code enforcers. These are people that are being presented, representing the city. And they're getting paid quite, quite well from what I'm aware of. But yet, there's so many things that needs to be adjusted. Whether it's the, the wood, I mean, it's ridiculous. You know, you got four or five feet tall wood right here in the city limit. I mean, when I say the limit, it's in the city district. Now, I think somebody needs to, you know, confirm, confirm with that person, don't you think, mayor?
It's a commercial property. It's not in a historic district. I don't know what you're getting at here.
Well, I'm getting at that-
It's a man's business.
I'm beg your pardon?
It's no code violation.
Well, I'm just asking, uh, I don't know because I don't know the rules and regulations exactly. But I'm asking the mayor, do you think it's a very nice representation of the cleanest city in, in Louisiana? With that wood standing out there? With all those buses sticking out there?
The buses have been that gentleman's business, busing our children to school for years and years.
Just cause he's been doing it for years and years, that, that doesn't mean it's right.
It's his property.
Yeah, it's his property.
Commercial property.
But he also has rules and regulations to abide by the city. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, then the rules and regulations are being bent a little bit.
I don't think so.
Can I burn it?
No.
I think you're referring to the bus on the sidewalk, I guess, parked on the sidewalk.
Well, the bus is not the issue. The issue is the wood. They cutting wood in there. And you know, there's, there's, there's houses behind it. There's houses on the same street. I guess, you know, I guess these people tolerate it. But I don't tolerate it because it looks horrible for the city of Hammond. You know, I just can't believe, even though, you know, the mayor's been in office going on, what, nine years? Ten years or whatever? But what I'm saying, it's not his fault, okay? It's the council is not bringing this to the mayor's attention, I guess. So maybe I can put the blame on y'all, okay? How about that?
Well, I'm gonna say this here, Mr. Sal, since you, you know, and I can take it all. Do the person that cut wood at the gas station, do they have a permit? Do they have license?
They have a license to be, they're operating their business.
I'm talking about with the firewood. I ain't talking about the gas.
They're operating their business.
No, no.
That's a difference, is that a difference? Is that incorporated? Is it incorporated?
No, I'm saying, this, this is what I'm asking. This the question I'm asking. The man that's at the filling station, do he have license to cut firewood? That's the question.
No.
We'll let you know that tomorrow.
Andre, it's right next to your office. Do you, have, have you heard anything about that with the firewood or occupational license or anything?
You got occupational license? I don't know.
I, I know. I think, you know, rules are bent, rules are regulated to whoever you are. And, uh, you know, we gonna make a change in the city of Hammond. It's gonna take us a little while. And we gotta start at the bottom, but guess what? We gonna be a force to be reckoned with in a matter of time. It's gonna take us time. But we gonna, we gonna get the city of Hammond straight. I've been living here over sixty years and I'm embarrassed to say, I had a man and lady the other day across the street from Lee's and they was cutting wood. And, uh, the lady says, well, who's cutting that? I said, I don't know. They, they've been having wood over there since I was a little bit of a boy, I guess, you know? So that means they could continue cutting. And I'm gonna be eighty pretty soon, okay? So they've been cutting for about at least sixty years. Thank y'all.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
You wanna let these folks-
Wallace, you don't, Mr. Wallace, you don't wanna say nothing? Oh, okay. I didn't know.
Uh, I just wanna say that, uh, what he was saying, I mean, the guy cuts wood every day, all day. Christmas Eve, all day. But you got, you got- The guy cuts wood all day, every day. Christmas Eve, Christmas Day. He have guys working. He have at least six guys working. At least six guys, different guys working. And they do sell wood to different people. And I done seen people come in with trailers loading up wood. I don't wanna talk to you.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Mean the adjourn.